I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to all of you to the Monday, March 23, 2015, meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We're delighted you're all here with us today. If you would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes. Mr. Baruch.
Here.
Ms. Conley.
Here.
Mr. Duncan.
Here.
Ms. Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Z.
Here.
Mayor Tarter.
Here.
Do we have a motion? I believe we have an amended meeting agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the amended meeting agenda?
Mr. Tarter, I move to adopt the agenda of the meeting as amended.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. I believe we have a proclamation. Do we not? Madam Clerk?
Yes, there's a proclamation declaring April 1 through 7, 2015, as Local Government Education Week.
Okay. I'll go ahead and read this. Whereas since the colonial period, the Commonwealth of Virginia has closely held the institutions of local government, and whereas local governments throughout the Commonwealth provide valuable services to the citizens of the communities they serve, and whereas citizen services such as law enforcement, public health, safety, recreational opportunities, and educating local children are most often delivered at the local level, whereas in recognition of the work performed by local governments, the Virginia General Assembly on February 29, 2012 designated the first week in April as Local Government Education Week in Virginia, and whereas April 2, 1908 was the creation of the council manager form of government in the city of Staunton, thereby making the first week in April appropriate for this designation, whereas the city government has throughout the year spoken to middle school classes, read at and about city hall book to elementary school classes, conducted mock city council meetings, and hosted several scout troops to learn about local government. Now therefore, I.P. David Tarter, Mayor of the city of Falls Church, do hereby proclaim the week of April 1 through 7, 2015, as Local Government Education Week in the city of Falls Church, and further proclaim that the Falls Church city government and Falls Church city schools will partner to promote civic education and engagement in an effort to educate citizens about their local government, strengthen the sense of community, and engage the next generation of local government managers. Ms. Messner, are you going to come up and receive the proclamation?
I'd be honored to, and I wanted to acknowledge the great partnership that we've had with the schools to be able to do the activities that you talked about to help orient people to local government and hopefully future city managers. And this is also fully supported by the Virginia Local Government Managers Association, so we're having statewide adoption of this proclamation.
Great. Madam Clerk, do we have any oaths of office to administer to any new board and commission members?
Is anybody here to take your oath this evening? No, sir.
Okay. We do have some written comments. I have about four right now. I don't know if anyone else in the audience wishes to speak tonight. If you do, fill out a yellow form and provide it to our city clerk, and you'll be able to speak. You can either speak now, or you can speak later on when the item is called. And so I'm going to go ahead and call out the names now. And again, you can speak now, or if you'd like to defer until later time, that you're welcome to as well. The first speaker is Jürgen Torren. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter and council members. I provided a letter to the city clerk when I came in with more detailed comments, but just like to highlight a few points. I am very disturbed by the proposed tax increase between the real estate assessment increase and the proposed force and tax increase. My property taxes along with those of my immediate neighbors will go up by 12.3 percent, which is unusually high considering that inflation rate is around 1.6 percent. I don't know anyone who's gotten a pension increase or wage increase anywhere near 12.3 percent. And even the Dow Jones Industrial Average only went up by 7.5 percent in the last year. So I think that's just an inordinately high increase from year to year. The next point I would make is that I think if that trajectory continues, we actually do great harm to Falls Church. I did some calculations for a median home at the median income based on today's mortgage rates and the proposed tax rate, it would consume 40 percent of someone's income. And I think at that 40 percent level for property taxes insurance is beyond what most mortgage companies would qualify. I know that one of the drivers in our ever-increasing taxes is school funding, and it pains me to pay more for something that other people pay less for, for the equivalent services. And again, I had mentioned this before, looking at the per capitation for Fairfax County pupils versus Falls Church city pupils, we pay almost $9 million more to educate our children, which seems a lot considering that of the top 10 high schools in Virginia, of course, George Mason is one, and Yorktown Arlington is another, but the other eight are all in Fairfax County, so they must be doing something right at considerably less. So that's one area I think the council should look at. I think one way of looking at that is going to a per capitation for the school system. If you gave them a per capitation of 14,500 per student, that would eliminate the 4 percent tax increase, and that's well between the higher amount that Arlington County spends and the lower amount that Fairfax County spends. And finally, because, again, of future school costs, and by that I mean the George Mason High School, Mary Ellen Henderson Secondary School reconstruction or reconfiguration project, that's clearly going to add more tax burden on us regardless of whatever developers come up with. And it seems to me that one option that the council should look at and the public should be able to discuss is a renovation option. And so I'm asking the council to hire an outside independent firm that has the qualifications to assess the engineering of those buildings to determine whether renovation is indeed a more cost-effective option. I think such an assessment, excuse me, such an assessment is a win-win situation because it'll either show that we can do it for less, or it'll give us, give the council the information it needs to bolster a request for a bond referendum to build the new schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is, looks like Joseph, is it Delaney? Right. I'm sorry. Come on up. Welcome.
My name is Joe Dallahanti, and I'm a resident of Arlington, but I own a townhouse in Gresham Place. Many of you may recognize me, you may have seen me at the farmer's market last summer protesting the high taxes in Falls Church. Now, the city of Falls Church has raised the assessed value of my townhouse in Gresham Place by 9 percent. So I wanted to determine how close the Falls Church assessed values were to the Falls Church sales values. And so I obtained Realtors' Multiple Listing Service data, and it shows that 185 Falls Church homes were sold in 2014. I selected two dozen of those and computed the ratio between the assessed value and the sales value, and Falls Church is 95.8 percent on those 20 of the 185 sold last year. I also obtained the RMLS data for the Arlington area 22205, which is adjacent to Falls Church, and I selected two dozen of their sold homes and computed that same number, and in Arlington, the ratio, in Arlington, it is 86.6 percent, a full 9 percent below how you assess the value of the properties. So what does this all mean in terms of taxes? My numbers may be a little bit difficult to follow, so I've written them down here for you. In Falls Church, if, I have an example of a million-dollar home in Falls Church and one in Arlington, just for the simple math, not that, well, I have that many of them. But at any rate, in Falls Church, the assessed value of a million-dollar home would be 958,000. Your mill rate is 1.325, and that means that the 2014 tax was $12,893. In Arlington, the assessment on a million-dollar house would assess it at 866,000. Its mill rate is a little less than a dollar, so its tax would be $8,666. That's a $4,000 difference on a million-dollar house. Falls Church taxes are, in fact, at least in 2014, Falls Church taxes were 46.6 percent higher than the taxes in Arlington. That's worse than the sign that I was carrying said that they were between 40 and 45. In fact, they're 46.6 percent. Now, in 2015, you've already taken on an additional debt burden of $15.3 million for the schools. You've raised my assessment by 9 percent. And last year, as I say, Falls Church took an extra $4,000 from me. I have other things, better things to do with the $4,000 rather than to spend it in that way. Now, I fully understand that Falls Church has excellent schools, and that is where much of the money is going. But I remind you that it is a small affluent area, and every affluent area in this juris, or in this area, has excellent schools. McLean has excellent schools, Langley has excellent schools, and Yorktown has excellent schools. And you get it for a much cheaper price. Anybody who buys a place in Falls Church isn't paying attention with this sort of a difference. I have handouts here that I'll be, and any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, sir.
Quite welcome. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Edwin Henderson.
Good evening. I live at 307 South Maple Avenue in the city of Falls Church. And I really like living here in Falls Church. It's a very wonderful community, 2.2 square miles of what they used to call a village, and now they call it a little city. But there are a lot of people that, living in this town, particularly those that live on a fixed income, that won't be able to live here much longer if the taxes continue to rise in the way that they're going. 45 percent of this budget is going towards the school, but there's at least another 15 percent in debt and other expenses in the budget that bring the school's allocation to about 60 percent of the budget. This is unsustainable. Like the two gentlemen that came here before me, I think everyone has a complaint about the taxes. And I think that you all need to listen and make some tough choices. And I don't know what the issue is, or how we're going to solve this, but I know a lot of people won't be able to live here if the taxes keep going up. Now, all this building that's going on, at what point are we going to get a payoff in the tax rate? I can't, I sure we can't do anything about assessment, but the tax rate is something that you all said, and I know that's based on your expenses. But something has to be done. And I think that it's up to you all to make a decision. You know, it's nice to have great schools, but being the manager of a nonprofit here, I wish more was going towards arts and culture here in the town. I mean, you've got great schools, but you could spend more on some art and some culture, I think. And I'm sure there's a lot of other things that people want other than schools. Only 30 percent of the people that live here in the city, the households, have children in the schools. That leaves 70 percent of the households here in this community wondering where the money went. And you all have to provide an answer for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gina Kacheci, if I've got that right, and followed by Ira Kalin. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Good evening. My name is Gina Kacheci. I own a home here in Falls Church. I own a business here in Falls Church, but tonight I'm here as a volunteer in Falls Church. I am president of the Board of Directors of Creative Cauldron. And my goal tonight is to quantify and quantify the quality of the artistic and cultural experiences provided by Creative Cauldron, a grateful recipient of grant funding through the Catch Foundation. I will also highlight the impact and reach that Creative Cauldron has in the DC region, and how we bring people into the city. Creative Cauldron opened our seventh season at Art Space this past October with a highly critically acclaimed production of Jacques Brel is Alive and Well and Living in Paris. The DC Metro Theatre Arts reviewer wrote this. "This is truly a production for music lovers, and I expect this show and its creative team to be in the mix come awards season." And she was spot-on in her prediction. Jacques Brel received two Helen Hayes Award nominations. One for Alan Naylor, for Outstanding Lead Actor in a Musical, and a second Helen Hayes Award nomination for Outstanding Ensemble in a Musical. This is the 30th anniversary year of the Helen Hayes Awards, one of the nation's most prestigious cultural honors. The Helen Hayes Awards recognizes and celebrates excellence in professional theater throughout the Washington metropolitan area. It's the Tony Awards for our region. There are 47 categories for artistic excellence, and more than 200 eligible productions compete for nominations. The winners of this year's Helen Hayes Awards will be announced on April 6. And whether we win or not, Creative Cauldron's two nominations is independent recognition of the high-quality live theater that we produce right here in Falls Church. Let me cite a few examples of reviews from some of our other productions this season alone. Creative Cauldron's world premiere musical of The Turn of the Screw is a, quote, "stylishly layered and captivating must-see musical. Smart, moving, amazing," so said the DC Theatre Scene reviewer. The Broadway World Review had this to say about The Turn of the Screw. "Move over Eric Schaefer of Signature Theatre. There's a new musical venue in town. It's got tremendous talent, it's intimate, and wonder of wonders. It's just over the border in Falls Church. To make things even sweeter, the joint is also commissioning new works for local artists." I'm almost done. The DC Theatre Scene Review said Creative Cauldron's Madeleine's Christmas with its dash of magic and splash of charm is a wonderfully warm holiday show. Creative Cauldron is making its mark on the Washington DC theatre scene. Over 10,000 people of all ages come to Creative Cauldron at Art Space Falls Church every year. Let me tell you a bit about who comes to Falls Church because of Creative Cauldron. For Creative Cauldron's world premiere musical adaptation of The Turn of the Screw, 74 percent of the audience came from Virginia. 32 percent came from Maryland. 4 percent came from DC. 2 percent came from five other states, including one from Florida. Of those who came from Virginia to see The Turn of the Screw, 32 percent came from Falls Church, that's including the Falls Church area of Fairfax County. 18 percent came from other locations in Fairfax County. 16 percent came from Arlington. And 16 percent came over the river and through the woods and traveled from Potomac, Rockville, Bethesda, Gaithersburg, and Silver Spring. Creative Cauldron is drawing people and dollars into Falls Church from all over the Washington region, and we contribute to the city's increasing reputation as an arts and cultural destination. I thank you for your past investment in us, and I urge you to continue to invest in the arts and cultural nonprofit organizations that bring so much and so many to Falls Church. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your contributions to the art scene here in the city. Our last speaker is Mr. Ira Kalin. Mr. Kalin?
May I just, with the issue of the legislature coming up?
Yes, absolutely. Are there any other folks who wish to speak at this time? Okay. Why don't we go ahead and move on? Madam Clerk, will you summarize the written comments, please?
Yes. On the budget and tax rate, John Bodicker wrote twice with concerns about the cost of the school system and rising taxes. He said that other options for the school system, including joining the county school system, should be explored. He asked about the validity of the recent school poll. He questioned per-student costs and the racial makeup of enrollment. He questioned the validity of trying to match larger jurisdictions' teacher salaries. Charles Plymire echoed Mr. Bodicker's concerns. Christina New of 413 Lincoln Avenue opposes a real estate tax increase. Rosemary Donaldson of 109 West Marshall Street expressed concern about increasing taxes on older moderate-income residents. She decried development that takes over green space and the demolition of older smaller homes in the city. She said that the schools are important, but that building more condos just leads to more students to serve. Bob Pender of 313 Little Falls Street forwarded a survey of neighboring real estate tax rates. He said that Falls Church's tax rates with stormwater fees are way out of the market. He said that people are acting on these higher taxes by moving out at a cost to the community. He said that we could be better at allocating resources to competing public priorities. Brian Rye of 613 11th Street said that he does not have a problem with a tax increase to $1.34.5 for FY '16. He said he understood the rationale of keeping the tax lower in the last fiscal year as homeowners adjusted to the stormwater fee. He said he was surprised that the proposed FY '16 rate was not higher because of that fact, the fact that the fund balance was used in FY '15. He said he supports fully funding the school's requests. Mr. Rye also wrote that he finds new development in the city exciting, but he believes that condos, rather than apartments, are more suitable residential components, and that the greater need is for parking so that nonresidents can access commercial establishments to help the tax base. Victor Wong of 914 Park Avenue urged the council to get an accurate accounting of the school board's budget request. He asked for more than anecdotal evidence that teachers are leaving the school system for Arlington County for higher pay. He provided an analysis of school board documentation regarding salaries falling behind neighboring jurisdictions. He said the reason Falls Church teachers fall behind in salary is a problem with the step rate structure in which new teachers get no pay raises in their first two years. On Mason Row, Daniel and Rena Lopez of 815 Fulton Avenue asked the city council to vote no on any height variation for Mason Row. They asked that any approved plans include sufficient parking for the development because they are concerned that neighborhood streets will be used extensively by visitors to Mason Row. Kathy Neamy of 304A Pine Street said she supports the redevelopment of the West and Broad property, but has concerns about the scale of the project and the effects on traffic and bike pedestrian safety. She urged the city council to require the building height to step down to code on West Street facing the W and O D Trail, and she opposes an above-ground parking lot facing Park Avenue. She also requested that council and the developer ensure adequate retail parking, maximize retail elements with strong anchors, and eateries with outdoor space, and provide public green open space. She expressed concern about the impact on the schools of increased residential density at the site. Jamison and Kamal Bazaz Smith of 303 Pine Street opposed granting a height variance to Mason Row because it would overpower the residential neighborhood. Lisa Voruxis of 301 Grove Avenue requested in regard to the Mason Row proposal that the city council not grant a height waiver nor a parking waiver, relocate the hotel to the Broad Street side of the development, reduce the number of residential units, address concerns about the additional residents and their impact on services, infrastructure, and schools, and address concerns about increased volume and cut through traffic on Grove Avenue. She said that she's not opposed to development at the intersection of West and Broad, but she said it should take into account existing neighborhoods and the environment, reduce tax burden, and keep the city viable and alive. We had some comments on the library. The library board wrote that the library should not move from its current location to the Mason Row development. John Schmelzer said the library should be kept at the current location. And the Village Preservation Society wrote to support renovation and expansion of the library at the existing site. They also support the project to provide additional parking in a parking deck to support parking for the library, city hall, shopping, and the farmer's market. And on other issues, Diane Bartley of 331 James Street expressed concern about the condition of, and asked about the status of stormwater improvements at Big Chimney State Park. Joseph Davis, 311 North Van Buren Street forwarded his daughter's request to learn about how to amend the city code to allow hedgehogs as pets. And the CACT, as requested by the city council, forwarded information about becoming a walk-friendly community.
Is that all?
Yes, sir.
All right. Did everyone get all that?
Repeat that, please.
Okay. Do we have any council requests? Okay, it doesn't look like we do. Yes, Ms. Conley?
Mr. Shields, on all those requests that Ms. Z just read, I think we're going to address the first three sets today, but what about Diane Bartley's request for Big Chimneys Park and the hedgehog request? Have they been dealt with by staff?
The hedgehog request is being looked at right now. The Big Chimneys Park, we're going to talk about the Big Chimneys Park as a capital improvements program, but that is scheduled for FY '18. And so I'm working with Danny Schlitt on things that we can do in the interim to improve the drainage on the site so that it's more usable and more attractive in the meantime.
Any other council requests? If not, why don't we go on to the first item then? Oh, I'm sorry, to the, why don't we go to the report of the city manager? Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. Just a few updates on some infrastructure items that we're working on in the city. As the council is aware, we have been working with neighborhoods that have experienced sanitary sewer backflows at their properties, and there are specific areas of the city where they have been more frequent in recent years. And so we've reached out to them to communicate, to hear what the problems are, and put together a plan to address them. And one of the things that is part of that approach, much of the problem comes from private laterals that are broken or aged. And so through the Sanitary Sewer Fund, we intend to offer a service for homeowners in specific areas of the city where we know in the catchment areas, we've had issues with surcharging in our sanitary sewer system, to offer a free lateral and plumbing inspection for their houses. And the theory behind this is, is that with homeowners being empowered with the knowledge that their sewer laterals might be cracked, which can cause inflows into their property, but also contribute to problems downstream from them, that knowledge would be helpful for them in their home planning, potentially to address those over time. And so that letter is going out to homeowners to offer that service, and we'll report back to council in terms of the number of people that participate in it. We have funding for 50 of these inspections, and so we anticipate we'll, if we have higher demand than that, then we'll have to assess how we will handle it. It is pothole season, and Public Works has filled 328 potholes in the last month, but I also want to note on the front page of the city website, if you have a pothole on your seat, on your street, to report it, so that we can have it on our list to go out there and take care of it. The West The West End Park, everyone can see that it is under construction, and we're about 30% complete on the park project with the rough grading worked on and the bio-retention pond done. And as spring progresses, I think we'll see much more visible improvements there at the West End Park. And then two stormwater projects. The Little Falls-Great Falls Stormwater Project, all of the detention basins are installed. These are the big 72-inch pipes that are installed under the tennis courts behind the community center, and we're connecting those to the City Hall system now. And the goal of that is to hold that water back so that it does not flood downstream properties on Little Falls and Great Falls. And so that project is, the stormwater piece of it is almost complete, and then we'll move to restoring the tennis courts immediately after that. At the Cherry Street School, the Thackeray School, the detention facility is complete. It's underneath the parking lot of that school. The project has been delayed due to an issue with the rim drain around the tennis court at the Thackeray School. They were installed at the wrong elevation, so we're working with the contractor to get that fixed, and once that is fixed, then we'll proceed with the resurfacing of the tennis court. Because of those delays, we think that that project is probably going to stretch on into July, into the summer months, before that project is wrapped up. That has caused some frustration with the neighborhood there because it still looks like a construction site around the tennis court. We met with them last week to provide them information about the reason for the delay, and we'll continue with our communication and outreach with them as we proceed. Those are just a few items for updates. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Baruch?
So, Mr. Shields, on the situation that you just mentioned about the tennis courts and the stormwater infrastructure that's going in, and it being placed in the wrong elevation, who's being held accountable for the cost overage and the error?
The design for them had the wrong elevation, so the contractor actually installed them per the designs. So we're sorting out between the engineering firm that produced the designs and the contractor. The workers are going to proceed to correct it, but there's some work to be done to resolve exactly ultimately how it will be resolved.
Do we know what the cost is?
We do not at this point.
But it's being done?
It is being done.
Do we think, and let me know, and the city attorney can certainly chime into, I'd like to get a sense of what our liability and exposure is on the city's side because of that. This is possibly the second time we're hearing about stormwater issues. I mean, they're different, but we're also going to be taking on additional capital projects, and things like that are bound to happen, but I think we need to get a better sense of when there's errors that happen. You know, how are our contracts being written up and drafted to make sure that the city is not liable for errors when we're relying on other people's expertise, that the city and the taxpayers are not on the hook, especially as we move forward with some of the capital projects we're talking about? So happy to hear answers to that now, or, you know, maybe it's a closed-session item, but I'd like to get some answers to those questions.
Well, it's probably not something we can discuss all the details of here at the dais. I can say that the city is aggressively representing our interests in this, but we can talk offline in terms of how we think it will be resolved.
And I think that's something that's going to be, you know, I don't want to speak for other council members, but it's something that I think the entire council should hear about. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, why don't we move to the business on the agenda? Madam Clerk, will you call the first item, please?
Thank you. Yes, we have TO 1503, Ordinance to Authorize Participation in VACO VML Virginia Investment Pool Trust Fund for the Purpose of Investing Monies Belonging to the City or Within Its Control Other Than Sinking Funds in Certain Authorized Investments in accordance with Section 2.2-4501 of the Virginia Code.
Mr. Shields? Ms. Costa?
Treasurer will speak to this.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. This is the second reading, and are there any questions? I guess I'd start off with that. Are there any questions about the ordinance? Okay. I'm excited about it, so I hope that we can approve it. Thank you.
I tell you, just for the purpose of the public, maybe you could just briefly describe what it is that we're going to be doing. I think probably here in council, we're pretty familiar with it, but maybe just give like a one-minute synopsis.
Okay, sure, yeah. Well, it's called the Virginia Investment Pool. It's an investment pool along the lines of LGIP or the Local Government Investors Pool. It was established by Virginia Municipal League, VML, and VACO, the Virginia Association of Counties and whatever, VML-VACO. In order to provide sort of longer-term investments, which would then provide a little bit greater return on our investment than we currently earn on LGIP. But in order to get into that Virginia Investment Pool, we have to have an ordinance on the books of the locality authorizing us to do that, authorizing us to participate. So that's what this ordinance is for. And once we have the ordinance, then we sign a trust agreement with them, and then we can begin to participate.
Okay. Are there any questions? Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor.
Got you.
Perhaps you could refresh our memory on the prospective yield or perhaps the hindsight yield, and then our liquidity position.
Sure. Well, currently, you know, our investments are in LGIP, the Local Government Investors Pool, which is 100% liquidity. We can take out, you know, whenever we want to. We can withdraw whenever we want to. But as a result of that liquidity, that 100% liquidity, our return is very low. It's been like a tenth of a percent for, you know, the last year. The Virginia Investment Pool, which started last year, the return dated February 28, 2015, it was .79% or 79 basis points. They are projecting .77% over and rising over the next year as interest rates are expected to rise. So on, you know, I think in our ordinance, we said .77%. So over a year on $10 million, you know, you're talking, you know, $100,000 difference or up to 1% is what we're talking about. So we're talking $100,000 as opposed to, you know, like $20,000 on the LGIP, on what we've earned the last year in LGIP. So it's not a significant amount of money at this time, although, you know, as the mayor pointed out, $100,000 is a new school bus. And as interest rates go up, we do, you know, expect that to be an even greater return.
Other comments? Question table, let's take the comments a minute. Why don't we just ask questions, and we'll turn it over to the public, and then we can have comments and go to a motion. Are there any other questions right now? Okay, seen none, why don't we open it up to the public? I know Mr. Kaelin would like to speak to this matter. Why don't you come on up? If there's anyone else in the public that would also like to speak at this time, please put in a speaker slip, and you can speak as well. Mr. Kaelin, welcome.
Good evening. Ira Kaelin, 429 Park Avenue. I support the approval of the ordinance, but I should comment that it has to be more carefully managed than may appear at first sight. This has a duration risk to it since these are investments over a year, maybe two, I don't know how long, I didn't see that in the paper, two, three years. It means if interest rates spike and we have to wait two weeks to take our money out, we could lose money. It's unlike a pension. The pension, we have predictable withdrawals and predictable costs, and there's a whole body of mechanisms to even out interest rates and market movements, and this, there really isn't. So can't put all your money there. It's a great idea, but it has to be only for those funds where we're going to have some idea how much we're going to need in the future and some flexibility so that it is not risk-free, so it has to be managed with care. And if it can be done, a question should be posed to VACO, which says, at the current interest rates, if it went up 1% or down 1%, how would that affect investments made six months ago or a year ago, to see in fact whether the volatility is significant or not? Just a heads-up that it's not necessarily a very simple process to manage. I'm sure our CFO can help a lot in managing that in terms of the design, but I just wanted to make that statement to the council members. The other thing is that, I didn't put it on the paper, but on the issue of unsolicited bids, going to abuse my right to speak for a minute or two, unsolicited bids are actually a global issue. They're quite controversial. The World Bank has written a paper on the findings on unsolicited bids, the pros and the cons. Personally, I don't think the city is even remotely in conditions to start to evaluate an unsolicited bid. The fee, I think, that permitted to charge is $50,000. There's a whole infrastructure that has to be established to evaluate these types of complex bids, and the city does not have it. The state of Virginia laws are really not up to the current status of development in the issue of unsolicited bids. So I don't think the city is ready, and it's very risky at this stage, to accept it because you could be picking up liabilities that you're not aware of if you accept a bid contrary to the statement that the competition can go forward with no problem if you want. It's not that simple. There are other best practices that would vary from that, and the city may be expected to cough up money, and then the council will be obligated to deal with an issue of an additional expense to cover some of the unsolicited bid costs. So please, don't rush into this. This is something that needs to be very carefully analyzed before you accept anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaelin. The other speaker slips that I have do not specifically address the VACO question that's before us, so I'm not going to call your names now, but if anyone does wish to speak to this particular item, please come forth now. But I'll keep the rest of the speaker slips because they're on budget issues for the time we get to the budget. With that, why don't we go ahead and turn it over to comments? If there are any comments from members of council? If not, Mr. Duncan?
Just one, maybe it's a clarification or question. So Ms. Costa, on line 136 here of our documents, page 44, it says, "The City Council of City of Falls Church does hereby designate the Treasurer of the City of Falls Church," that's you, "to serve as the trustee of the City of Falls Church with respect to the trust fund and to determine which funds under the treasurer's control shall be invested in the trust fund." So this is basically on your shoulders. On line 71, it explains further, 70 to 71, that the City Finance Department, Mr. La Conde and his associates, will make revenue projections in consultation with the treasurer to reflect the potential for higher investment yield for the portion of the city fund balance and reserves that are placed in the VIP. So as I understand it, that means that you are in communication with Mr. La Conde and his staff. You make the call as to how much it's appropriate to invest in the VACO VML vehicle, and then the finance office's staff then plugs the numbers into the budget projections that we receive. Is that right?
That's correct, yeah. I would also add that Mr. La Conde, the CFO, and I are in very close communication. We work well together. We're in agreement about this, the fact that we need it. We haven't settled on an exact number yet. We're still crunching numbers. I believe currently in the budget, we're talking about $10 million, but we're seeing if we can do more than that. We feel pretty comfortable that we can, but we're just not ready to say a definite number yet. But I will definitely be reporting back to you all the results and, you know, how much we're investing and how much we're earning, you know, on a monthly basis.
Right. I have a question. Is it a monthly, like, report that you get from them? Okay.
Get a monthly statement. I would also like to say that, and I didn't mention this before, it was in our notes from, you know, the first reading, approximately 15% of the fund will be liquid at all times. Everything will be invested in relatively short-term, one- to five-year fixed income investments. So things are a little bit longer term, although not too long, and that's why we're able to earn a little bit more money, because the term's a little bit longer.
And all the funds are available with two weeks' notice, which is still fairly good liquidity. Okay, well, my only comment is to, the manager and I, when we were down in Roanoke for the VML conference last fall, presented a presentation about this, and it seemed like a good idea. And so I appreciate you picking the ball up and running with it and getting it set up for our consideration. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Snyder, and then Ms. Conley?
Thanks much. I'd like to ask the CFO if he supports approving this ordinance, and Mr. Kaelin raises some important questions. Are you prepared to work with the treasurer to appropriately manage the funds?
Yes, I do support the ordinance, and I will work with the treasurer. Again, I am aware of Mr. Kaelin's concerns. My idea and thoughts on this is not to put ourselves in a position where we have to withdraw money. We will try to maintain our liquidity in LGIP.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Ms. Conley?
My question is just in regards to the current budget planning that we're doing for next year. In the budget for next year, have we estimated that there will be some return from the VIP fund?
There is a projected interest income number in the current, in the 16 proposed budget.
And what is it?
It's $100,000.
$100,000. That's that, page 136, okay. And could that go up or down depending upon how much we decide to invest in the VIP?
Yes.
Okay. And when will we decide to do that, to put things into the VIP?
Well, as soon as we get the ordinance passed, then I would have to sign the trust agreement, and then very shortly after that.
We can start to invest. Okay. Thank you very much.
I would say within 60 days.
Okay, thanks.
Other comments? If not, I have a few comments. I'm delighted that we're going to be hopefully approving this vehicle. As a city, we really need to squeeze every penny because we have a tight budget, as we always do, but I think we've got something like $27 million in cash earning a tenth of a percent, and most people wouldn't tolerate that in their checking account. You know, there's plenty of folks who get more than that for just simple interest on very small amounts. So I'm glad we now have a vehicle to get much more out of this large cash position, particularly we have capital expenditures over time that aren't expected to be used for the next couple of years. And frankly, the time value of money erodes when you have to wait, you know, three years, four years to expand it, and you're not really getting any interest. So I think, as you mentioned for me, even $100,000 moves the needle a little bit. You know, that's a school bus. $200,000, you know, that really does go a fair way to some of the needs that we have in the city. So thank you for bringing this forth, and I'm prepared to support it if we do have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt TO 15-03.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote, please?
Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
The motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you call the next item on the agenda?
We have three items, and they, the applicant has requested deferral, and this is the Mason Row, and I'll read those three items. TR 1429, Resolution to Amend the Comprehensive Plan of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, to change the designation of approximately 4.3 acres of land located at the northeast corner of West Broad and Northwest Streets, also described as 110, 112, 112A, 212, and 212A Northwest Street, 916, 920, 922, 924, 926, 928, 930, 932, and 934, West Broad Street, and 919, 921, and 925 Park Avenue. Real property code numbers 51-202-009 through 51-202-015, 51-202-003, 51-202-004, 51-202-005, 51-202-028, and 51-202-028, mixed outlaw from business and low-density residential 6.02, mixed use on the city's future land use plan map on application by Spectrum Development LLC. That's number one. TO 1428, Ordinance to Amend the Official Zoning District Map of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, by rezoning a total of approximately 3.13 acres of land, a portion approximately 2.11 acres from B3, general business district, and a portion approximately 1.11 acres from 2.11 acres from B3, general business district, and a portion approximately 1.02 acres from R1B.
I hate to interrupt you, and I'm sure you'd like to continue on, but I'm getting a signal from the city attorney that this may not be necessary to read.
I don't need to read them?
No.
Thank you. But I was going, so.
You were on a roll, that's true.
Okay, so we have TO 1428 and TR 1428. That's the third one. Thank you.
Okay. And so the developer has requested this matter be deferred, but the city attorney has recommended that we go ahead and do a formal motion to defer this matter. Do we have such a motion?
We can have time for comments and questions.
The developer's not here, and that's partly my fault in terms of telling them that we were going to focus on the budget tonight. They'd already put in the request for the deferral, and so I did not ask that they be here.
Well, there could be things that staff can take back to them.
That's true, and if you have questions for staff, please have them. But the developer's not here, but again, that was at my direction. But feel free to ask staff some questions.
I have a few and a couple messages as well.
Okay, well, why don't we go ahead and, if, we don't have a motion yet, but why don't you go ahead and make any comments or questions you have to say?
So do we know why the developer wanted to defer? Is it because of our calendaring, or is it for some other reason?
I think the developer wanted more time. The developer's in process of trying to address the comments from the Planning Commission, EDA, and the City Council at your work session two weeks ago. And they were concerned about presenting a project sort of in flux, and so they want to resolve those things that they think they can resolve and be able to present a clear picture to the council, so that when you refer it out to boards and commissions, it's clear what it is you're actually referring out.
Okay. Just for the benefit of my colleagues and other council members, and also for the public, there's sort of listed out, I believe, six items that I'd like to see, and just so that my colleagues and the developer and the public have a sense of, you know, what I may propose upon first reading, so it's not coming as a surprise. And most of these issues have been talked about before. One, the council at first reading upon my motion unanimously passed a series of items. So I'd like to get a status of those prior to first reading and where we're at as it compares to the application. And some of those are going to be redundant with what I'm saying now, but some of them are new based on the most recent work session that we had. First, I'd like to see a reduction of units, whether that's the number of units or square footage. Two is the parking garage needs to be treated completely differently than the way it's oriented now, as far as massing, how it's being dealt with. We talked about some ideas of wrapping it with retailer wrapping it with other residential units, some creative ideas, possibly doing a green facade to the outside, maybe another solution, and overall reducing the massing of it. Third was, from what I understand from staff, that there's been some discussions about ensuring that the hotel and theater happen. I've talked to both the city manager and to the city attorney about that, as far as how we draft the voluntary concessions. That's a bright line for me as one council member that I just wanted to be very public about. Unless there are fairly solid guarantees that we're going to end up with a hotel and theater, I will not vote this project going forward. And as long, you know, I'm willing to work with the developer on that up to the point of second reading, so if there's work that needs to be done between first and second reading, I'm open to that, but I just don't, don't want there to be any misconceptions that at the end of the day, if we don't have sureties, that's going to happen, that I would in any way support the project. And what I'd be looking for is contracts that would be in place at different points in time when we're doing the permitting process, and also substantial surety bond. Given what we've seen with this project, it's been in flux all over the place, and to be honest, I don't think contracts are going to do it, that there's going to have to be a specific performance bond as those two items go. Fourth, working with the Planning Commission and other boards and commissions to address those comments. I believe that the Planning Commission had some significant comments, and other boards and commissions did. Also, working with the neighborhood, which was part of the motion last go-around. And then finally, working with existing businesses to see whether they can be incorporated into the business, but I think that that's something that's going to have to be dealt with by the developer and the existing businesses right now. So that's, that's where my head's at. So just wanted to let the public and my fellow council members know that I'll probably be bringing up another, another motion, similar to what I did before, along the lines that I just outlined. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Unless there are any other comments, why don't we go ahead and entertain a motion, if there is such a motion, to defer this case?
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Well, first, a comment. I agree substantially with what Councilmember Baruch indicated, so. But to move forward, I move that we defer TR 14 dash 29, TO 14 dash 28, and TR, TO 14 dash 28, and TR 14 dash 28 until the City Council meeting of April 13, 19, 2015.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? The ayes have it unanimously. Madam Clerk, will you call the next item, please?
Should I read all of these?
Let's see if we get here.
I am going to read all four of the budget and tax-related items.
Okay.
Correct? Okay. We have TO 1504, Ordinance fixing and determining the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for the fiscal year 2016, general funds, school operating fund, school community service fund, and school food service fund, sewer fund and stormwater fund. We have TO 1505, Ordinance fixing and determining the FY 2016 through FY 2020 Capital Improvements Program budget and appropriating expenditure and revenue funds for the fiscal year 2016. TO 15 dash 06, Ordinance setting the rate of tax levy on real estate, personal property, machinery and tools, and all other properties segregated by law for local taxation in the City of Falls Church, Virginia for tax year 2016. And then we have TO 15 dash 07, Ordinance to amend Chapter 42 Utilities to revise sewer rates and fees as of July 1, 2015.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. Members of council, we're going to present the CIP tonight, but I would, so I'll keep my comments very short, and then I would recommend the council allow public comment, and then Cindy Mester can come and present the CIP, because we want to have a deep dive on that and a discussion with the City Council about it. So I will just note that in terms of our process, this is first reading on these four budget ordinances. The, the budget ordinance obviously sets the expenditures for the coming year. The tax rate ordinance sets the cap at first reading. If, if you set the tax rate, what you do tonight is what we will go forward with to advertise, and in later deliberations, the council cannot go higher than that rate, but the council can reduce that rate upon final adoption on April 27. And we have the CIP ordinance that would set out our appropriations for FY 16 and our plan for the subsequent four years after FY 16. And we have an ordinance to amend our utilities sewer rates, to increase our sewer rates by 3.5%. So those are the four actions tonight. We will have additional opportunities for the public to be involved and to provide you their input, and that includes a Saturday town hall meeting at 10 o'clock on April 11th, and then your second public hearing will be Monday, April 13th, and then your third and final public hearing will be Monday, April 27th, and that's the night when the council is scheduled to take action on these four items. So that's just a quick discussion of process. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, if there are no questions, what I'm going to do is open it up to the public. There are several people put in speaker slips. You can either speak now, or you can wait. If you wait, the CIP discussion may take several hours, so we're going to give you the opportunity to speak now, if you'd like. And so I'm going to call your name, and if you'd like to come up, great. If you don't want to, just tell me you don't want to speak now, and you can speak a bit later. Mary Kate Hughes, welcome.
Good evening, council members. I am a resident new to the City of Falls Church. I've been here for about three months, and I come before you just to express my support for school funding and the budget for next year. I come to you as a parent, but I also come to you as an educator, one who knows professionally and personally that the only thing that matters about good schools is teacher quality. And the only way to have quality teachers is to pay them what they deserve, and that if we cannot attract and retain the best teachers to our school system, then we will not remain the best school system that our children deserve, and that frankly is what drew my family to this area. I know we are not the only ones, and I think parity with surrounding districts should be the minimum goal. I think we want to strive for excellence above and beyond that, and I ask you to take that into consideration as you consider the budget for this year.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Bob Young. Mr. Young, are you still here? Did he step out in the hallway? Maybe you could let him know that he'll be up shortly. I've got also Erin Gill. Ms. Gill, are you available? Welcome.
Hi. Thank you, council members.
If you could also state your address for the record as well.
Yes, 603 South Spring Street. I come to you as a mother of three and as a founder of Falls Church City Parents, a small but growing Yahoo group where city parents are coming together to work together on issues, including the schools. I question the stat that we only have 30% of our homes with children in them. In a one-block radius of my home, in the past year, 13 new children have moved in. Every home that is sold has had a family with at least two children move into it. None of those children are in the school system yet. They will all start in the school system this coming year. That does not include five children who were born in the past year, who are not in the school system, including one child in my household. So that is 18 new children within one block of my home, and I know that's playing out all over the city. We do not want to tax out our neighbors who do not have children, or those on fixed incomes. Like to find a way to continue to support the schools and bring teacher parity without taxing out everyone else, and we support very strong, smart development, like the Mason Road development and other developments like that. Also supporting smaller condos there, the movie theater, the hotel, things that bring in revenue, parking, so that others can come in to our city and shop here. Parking to allow us as citizens to shop here without fear of our cars being towed. I would spend more money in the city if I didn't have to worry about putting all three of my children in the car to move from the library to the Starbucks, to Panera, everywhere else I need to go. We also support the, and I support the library's request to stay in their current location and renovate there according to the plan they will put forth tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the city. Mr. Young, Bob Young?
My name is Robert Young. I live at 608 Timber Lane here in the city. As many of you know, I'm one of the larger pairs of property taxes, commercial property taxes in the city, along with lots of other taxes. On the other hand, my son is a former teacher at TJ. He's now a principal of an elementary school. My wife was a longtime elementary school teacher. My daughter-in-law is a high school teacher in Arlington. So I've seen what teachers make and how they live from the inside for many, many years. Those two things pull me in two different directions, but I come down pretty squarely on asking council that if needed, we need to raise the tax rate to pay the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Young. Ms. Messner, are you ready? Do you want us to dim the lights? Would that make it easier to see your? All right.
It's my honor to be presenting the CIP this evening in a slightly different format instead of a work session, but I think it'll be a nice opportunity to put a lot of public information out there this evening. Joining me, behind me, we do have several of the Planning Commission members, including the newly elected chair of the Planning Commission, Rob Meeks, who'll be available for questions as the chair, and the other planning commissions are available as well. We have library board of trustee members here, we have the school superintendent, and I think all of the department's staff. So if there's questions on a CIP project, we should be able to handle that this evening. Before I jump into the presentation, I do want to call your attention to a couple resources. Of course, you have the proposed budget, and on page 250 starts the CIP. That is a summary of the CIP notebook that you all have gotten as a copy when this went through the Planning Commission with all its updates, and this is the document that would give you full details of individual projects. Because the proposed budget is in black and white, I've also provided you this evening in your council packet, along with the ordinance, a memo that outlines the Planning Commission's full votes, so you'd have all the full text, as well as in color copy, starting on page 278, which is an excerpt from the budget. Your budget page is in color, and that is helpful as we go through this discussion this evening. You can see which project is yellow or pink, and that would reflect what type of funding source they are. So if it's pink, that has become the color that I use for associating the school financing plan for the high school in Mary Ellen Henderson. If it's blue, it's water sale proceeds. If it's green, it means funding source yet to be determined. So you'll have that for general fund, transportation fund, and also stormwater and sewer. Page 282 of your budget book, and in the packet tonight in color, is a funding source, and this was a document requested by the Planning Commission, so it's new this year, so I wanted to highlight that. We have organized the projects by their funding source. So if you want to know what's all funded with grants, you could go to this chart and look at the bright orange, and you'll see the total for grants. Or if you wanted to know what's needed and recommended but not funded, you would go to the green column, and you could see everything that's not funded. So we'll be talking through that in more detail, but I wanted to call your attention to the references, because the slides won't have that fine of print in its available resource for you. Council's CIP, of course, is consistent with the vision. It is your implementing tool to achieve those desired states and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. A CIP establishes your long-term spending priorities. An actual CIP project is defined as a one-time project that is over 150,000 and should have a useful life of five years if we're paying for it with Pago or cash. If it's going to be financed, it needs a 10-year useful life. A capital project is not maintenance. It usually has more significant engineering design and construction costs, and the longer life maintenance will usually have to be routine upkeep, one to five years. The CIP that's presented in the proposed budget from the city manager is consistent with the guidance that you formally adopted, as is the operating budget. So this is a synopsis of your guidance as adopted. And the CIP is designed to implement some pretty significant goals, reinvesting in our community infrastructure, prioritize the needs over five years, as Mr. Shields indicated when we were talking about the ordinance. This CIP will, ordinance will appropriate funds for FY 16 and give us a very important roadmap for the next four years, for a total of five years, for what we need to reinvest in our community. And the CIP ensures continuing with the financial strength that allows us to be in the position to issue debt at affordable rate and maintain council's policies. This is a visualization of all the investment in the community. It is focused on commercial corridors heavily, but also school facilities, general government facilities, parks, and stormwater sewer. As we mentioned during Mr. Shields' presentation of the budget on March 2nd, and also the town hall, a lot has been accomplished in the last couple of years of the CIP, and really specifically last year. So this is a list highlighting the accomplished projects, which is significant, as well as the numerous projects that are underway. All of this information and details on the project is posted on the city's website, so community can get an update on where we are on the projects. As we've mentioned, we've really enhanced the community engagement as a result of the School Board, Planning Commission, and Council joint work session last December. This is a summary of those highlighted activities and the website address. This is a summary of those highlighted activities and the website address, where you can find the details of those projects and all of the community engagement. And in your packet tonight, you have a full copy of the online poll survey results and the community input session, so you can have that as a heavy, easy reference to that material. It's also on the website. The community engagement did have some feedback from our community, the town hall. Those that attended left 20 comment sheets, so this gives you the input from those attendees as to how they prioritize important projects. The first three bars go for school, library, city hall. So facilities were the top prioritization of those in attendance, and then it ranks down, and it's listed here on the side. And this is just one source of input. As we've talked about, none of our community engagement is statistically valid, but it does provide a barometer for council's consideration. And then for the online survey, we did have 875 respondents for that. This is just a graphic of the second question from the survey, and this is asking the respondents to prioritize the projects by timing and funding. The first question was just prioritize the projects, and you can see that the questions were about supporting the tax rate by doing the projects over a five-year period, not supporting it even if it meant delaying the projects for 10 years, and so forth, or no preference. So the blue just provides a summary of those that supported a tax increase to deliver the projects within a five-to-10-year period, and then we did the no tax rate increase, deliver past 10 in red. And so you can see how the projects broke out by that input. The Planning Commission did adopt and recommend the CIP on February 23rd. They did that with three motions. The first was to approve the CIP as recommended by staff on February 2nd and amended throughout. Some of that amendments included bringing the public parking structure up one year, breaking out the high school funding over two years, so there was planning, A&E money, and then construction. And the, those projects were all in there, they were just refined timing. The significant change was the recommendation of $210,000 from water sale proceeds to be used for improvements on the W&amp;O-D trail. They also did a separate motion endorsing the city hall public safety task force recommendations for the four add-ons, which I'll highlight in a little bit more detail, and then also recommending to council to look at establishing a dedicated and sustainable funding for capital reserves for equipment facility replacements. The city manager's proposed budget recommendation provided on March 2nd forwarded the Planning Commission's recommendations with one exception, and that was related to the W&amp;O-D. That one is recommended to, without funding from the water sale proceeds, so that a funding source would need to be found to proceed with this project, and the rationale for that is based on council's intent when adopting the ordinance for expending the 85% pot of money for water proceeds to be big enduring, large-scale projects. So I wanted to highlight the difference between the Planning Commission and the city manager's proposed budget, so you can deliberate over that during the rest of your budget process. The next section of this presentation, I'm going to purposely do as a highlight and just go through it quickly, but it is the financing part, and you have seen this mostly in the city manager's presentation and also in the planning commissions. So I put it here as a resource, so if there's questions, you can go back to it easily, and it'll also make it in one place for the community. But this shows you the pie of how the categories of CIP break out. We've broken out the dollar amounts by categories for FY16 and then the five-year. The five-year, of course, has the high school and the middle school and the facilities, and that's the large chunk there. This is a summary of the funding chart that I highlighted in your packet this evening, so you can see which items are only going to be funded if we identify a funding source. And so that's green, and you'll see in the five years, that's $2.9 million. The pay-as-you-go, yellow, towards the bottom, not the gold, that is the capital reserve funds that's available today, but by FY17, that'll be depleted to zero. And then for the water sale proceeds and land sale proceeds, I'll show you a more detailed chart, but that is starting to allocate water sale proceeds 15%, a portion of 85%, and then reflects the $1 million set aside in FY18 for Big Chimneys transportation projects. After the Harris Teeter project is fully operational and assessed, then we would have funding to address any transportation impacts, not done by the development or other grants, but also address Big Chimneys. So I wanted to flag that based on the earlier comment council received about the drainage issues at Big Chimneys. This is the same similar chart, but this would be for transportation broken out, so you can see this one has a lot of grant dollars that we're still deploying. This is a summary, so you have an easy reference to the debt service and the impact on the tax rate and the growth. These pie charts we had at the presentation town hall meeting that allows you by school debt breakout, general government breakout, and then a synopsis of general government and school tax-supported debt. These charts you've also seen, this is the one of our debt service for the long term, based on current debt without, and proposed CIP without the high school and middle school. The red line reflecting the deployment of the returns of pension investment, reducing the debt. There it is with the high school and middle school. Capital reserves, I do want to do a review of this, as we talked about during the presentation of Mr. Shields' budget. There's 12.9 million in capital reserves. The largest portion of that is water sale proceeds. There is some that is side aside for capital reserves. That's the funding that's in this proposed CIP that will do, spend down by the end FY17. It includes the $1 million for Big Chimneys transportation project, and then the rest of it is 11.3 for water sale proceeds. 15% of that is targeted for immediate needs, that's 1.7. The other 9.6 is the 85%. This CIP will, is recommending spending all of the 15% and 3.4 out of the 85% pot. And that's the breakout for that expenditures. So you can see the public parking is in the 85% column, and that would be to target the public parking at 313 Park Avenue, a separate project from but next to the library project. For the 15% pot, that is going to the synthetic turf at the high school and the track that goes around that football field, downtown reinvestment, and one year of traffic calming in FY16. This is the funding set aside for Big Chimneys, and this is school and general government facility reinvestment, the ongoing roof, HVAC, elevator work that one needs to do on older buildings that are in a bigger project in the CIP. Now, the important part, what are some of these projects? So I've organized them by different categories. The first one up is general government facilities, and this, first slide speaks to the fact that we do have a long-term master plan, reinvestment needs, but does not have a current sustainable funding source. And for the general government facility reinvestment, which is separate from the schools, modernization one, which I'll speak to in a moment, there is funding in FY17, $322,000, and then no additional funding in the CIP for facility reinvestment. You would have the library project and the city hall project, but nothing for the other 22 facilities. For city hall, we have the previously approved funding. Council reestablished the task force last November. We have a video link, and the link to that video is on this slide. And the task force then deliberated the question about the final needed designs for public safety, wayfinding, regulation compliance, and is recommending to the Planning Commission, which fully endorsed this, four additional add-ons. The task force recommendations was unanimous, as was the Planning Commission's. So the four projects are listed here, broken out. Parking deck is a second level to the existing proposed parking, this public safety. HVAC money, so we can do all of HVAC at one time instead of half, and then phasing later. Interior renovations would allow us to do more gut and reconfigure flexible space and walls that we can change over the next 30 years. And the north addition, which is sort of pictured here, is right between the two wings. Instead of having just a narrow 2,000-square-foot corridor, we would make this almost 6,000-square-foot, which would give you more office space and ability to connect the wings, allowing for longer-term use. And then this is showing the second level of the parking. With doing that second level of parking, the use is probably for general government facilities employees, so the surface parking near the front central entrance would be available for the public, but we would be able to free up 40 to 45 spaces on the Gage House Community Center, city hall, Cherry Farmhouse campus parking. And these are the reasons that the task force itemized, and they've already presented to you their full task force report, so this is a synopsis. The library expansion and renovation project is also proposed in the CIP. You've had a presentation from the consultants on this, and the library board of trustees did hold a community meeting on February 6th as well. So here you see two graphic illustrations of the west towards Virginia, or east towards the public parking expansion, adding a little over 6,000 square feet. This project also would allow for full renovations of the interior building, taking care of HVAC, plumbing, elevator issues, and depending on east or west, you would see the reconfiguration and enhancement of the internal functions of the library, and increasing daylight and community meetings, community spaces, study hall spaces, computer spaces. They are two projects, but the graphic shows how they're adjacent to each other. This is the library building with expansion. This would be a public parking deck next to 313 Park Avenue, coming in off of Park Avenue, and then also off of the office building. $8.4 million for the library, 3.4 for the parking structure, total of 109 spaces there, of which 55 are net new. It would be built structurally sound for additional levels and architecturally be compatible with the brick buildings around it. Besides the city hall public safety and library projects, we do have public safety items in the CIP, the first one being the firearm range, which is a partnership with Fairfax City. $300,000 is already appropriated in FY15. The CIP would then provide the additional funding to have that partnership. The preliminary total cost is $1.2 million, and the city manager and chief of police are continuing to do design and negotiations on that dollar amount. Also, Fire Station 6 is now being managed by Arlington for maintenance on their side of the cost structure, but they will be managing our appropriated CIP projects. They're currently implementing the $800,000 that's already approved and have submitted an additional 1.8, so that's in the proposed CIP. And I wanted to highlight that the director of public works in Arlington are continuing to refine those out years, since Arlington just took over this building for schools. They also have adopted their long-range planning document that is, been in some of the documents you received as part of the budget transfer. It's also on the website, and it is in the CIP notebook. There is $322,000 proposed for FY17 facility modernization. That's similar to the general government's reinvestment. There is no other funding in the five-year CIP for any modernization projects on the school, because this funding, plus the general government's, is what takes the capital reserve in FY17 to zero. The TJ HVAC for $2 million is in FY16, and then the funding for the high school in Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School is in there, but I have identified it as obviously that's the financing plan we've all been talking about and needs to be developed, the work that's being happened with the Joint Steering Committee. I've noted that depending on the progress of that and based on the school board's adopted CIP, potentially then a referendum would be needed in November of 2016. For transportation projects, as you saw with our earlier slides, there's numerous projects underway. We do have a staffing reallocation chart in the CIP. I call it the big chart. I meant to pull it out for you all. But it has all of the projects, design, construction timeline, and it takes all of the 16 FTEs that are allocated to CIP projects from contracting, granting, engineering, planning, construction management, and breaks out how those staff resources are allocated. And that gives you a nice snapshot of how, over the last two fiscal years, the new staff that councils approved dedicated to capital project implementation is being deployed. It is still a very heavy workload, a lot of backlog, progress to go, but this entire five-year period, we're working on already funded projects and some new ones. What will be new to this project is the public parking, the downtown area reinvestment, which is $600,000 using water sale proceeds, and for FY16, $200,000 for neighborhood traffic calming. And as I noted earlier, the W&amp;O-D project is not in the proposed CIP with a funding source. It's listed as green, so that you know, any green project is a recommended needed project, but not within this five-year window, no funding. This you saw in Mr. Shields' presentation. I just put it to consolidate it here, the components of the downtown reinvestment potential projects. We're continuing to work with stakeholders to refine that and refine the cost. And then the next topic of projects would be parks and fields. For recreation and parks, there is funding for FY16 for the master plan, and then again in FY20, a larger project of $600,000 to redo all of the trails and all of the parks so that we can be ADA accessible, deal with drainage issues, deal with tree roots. You'll note that FY17, 18, and 19 do not have master plan funding in the CIP. You would have FY17 funding to finish out the Howard E. Herman Stream Valley Park, and of course, as Mr. Shields noted earlier in this meeting, West End Park is currently underway. The open space funding that council appropriated last year for $1 million still exists, but the Rexon Park Advisory Board for an additional $1 million is not recommended in the CIP. Synthetic turf field and track is, as I noted earlier, in the CIP for FY16, $450 for the turf field, and $222,000 for the track, both being funded out of water sale proceeds as part of the 15%. So everything that's water sale proceeds is out of the 15% pot, up to the 1.7 million, except for the public parking garage, that 3.5, a durable facility, is out of the 85%. For utilities, these are the slides you saw also in Mr. Shields' presentation. We do have $5 million planned for stormwater utility projects, and the stormwater fee in this five-year period is not being proposed to change. At the end of this $5 million, though, we'll be reassessing what projects in the watershed plan need to be worked in the funding mechanism. Sanitary sewer, as noted with your rate ordinance before you tonight, is going up by 3.5%. That's being driven by treatment plan improvements and rehab of lines that are needed. Any treatment capacity expansion would be paid for with development fees, not the rate increase. And with that, I will close the presentation, and this is where you can find information online. Myself, the Planning Commission, any staff is available for questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Messner. I imagine there are a fair amount of questions, and we'll get to those in just a second. I thought I would give the public an opportunity to speak if there are any comments about the CIP before we get started into questions and comments. Is there any member of the public, that looks like someone just arrived, who wishes to speak to the CIP? speak to the CIP, who hasn't spoken to date? Great, thank you. Mr. Thurston, yeah, please turn up the lights. Mr. Thurston, please come on up, welcome. Thanks for coming by this evening.
Thank you. Keith Thurston, 1015 Birch Street. Speaking on behalf of the Village Society, we've provided two letters in regard to the CIP. One is the reuse of the water fund, specifically the downtown area on that and what we think the priority should be in the downtown business district. Secondly, a letter in support of the libraries in the CIP process over the next few years. Personally, I'd like to add one point, and that is on the utilization of water funds downtown, there's several areas of sidewalk that, with a little bit of investment, could greatly enhance the appearance of the city. There are three specifically, but I'll point out the one that everybody will notice is in front of the beetos there, the transition between two large areas and a short piece of sidewalk that hasn't been made into streetscape yet would greatly benefit from doing that and to smooth that section out and make it a little bit safer for other people, too. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Before we take any questions, I just have a general disclosure with regards to the budget I'd like to make. I've consulted with the city attorney and make the following declaration for city council's consideration of fiscal '16 city budget. A member of my immediate family, my wife, is employed by the Falls Church City Schools and therefore is a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY16 budget. However, I can fully, I can participate in the transaction fairly objectively in the public interest. Ms. Conley?
I would also like to make a disclosure. I have consulted with the city attorney and make the following declaration before city council's consideration of the proposed fiscal year '16 budget. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board and therefore am a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the approval of the FY16 budget. I can participate in the transaction fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Thank you. Why don't we go ahead to questions from council? Is there any structure you'd like to have, Ms. Mester, in terms of how we handle our discussion or questions to you?
I'm glad to divert a council if you want to do it by project or financing or whichever way works best for you all, since we're in kind of a new format.
Sure. Would you all have any preferences? Would you like to go project by project, or is there another? What's that? No? Okay. All right. All right, why don't we just go ahead then with questions and comments as they come along? Who has the first? Mr. Baruch?
Yeah. My questions are more along the lines of sort of policy and where we're at rather than projects, I think. You know, some of the projects have been developed over the years, but I think it's important to figure out, A, how we're going to pay for them and what the policies are behind it. So that's what some of my questions and comments are going to go towards. For staff, either Mr. Shields or Ms. Mester or Mr. LaConde, how much of the tax rate that's being proposed currently is going towards capital directly right now? Any of it?
Do you mean including debt service?
No.
Or just in terms of pay-as-you-go?
Pay-as-you-go.
No part of the tax rate goes for pay-as-you-go expenditures in the budget as proposed.
And the debt service would have been for projects previous to that?
That's correct.
And as far as sort of historically, what have we done towards debt service? Have we allocated funds for debt service in the past? I'm sorry, have we dedicated tax rate pennies, for example, towards Pago in the past, historically?
Well, it's really been in recent years that the council has done that. In 2012, we had about 1.2 million of debt service come off the city's books because of an expiry, you know, a term was completed on a bond, and the council elected to keep that 1.2 million in the tax rate to restore fund balance and then ultimately have that convert into pay-as-you-go capital projects. And so that's been done in recent history. However, in more recent budgets, that funding has been taken out of the budget, so there's no tax rate support for pay-as-you-go or for capital at the present time.
And I think in the past, when we've had surplus funds because of how we're structurally organized, specifically the difference between the tax year and the fiscal year and how that shakes out, we've at times had additional funds that we've then allocated to Pago, if I recall, is that right?
Yeah, that was a mechanism because probably six years out of seven, there would be, because of the tax year and the fiscal year being out of line, the majority of the time, there'd be a surplus at the end of the year, and the council then took that surplus and dedicated it towards pay-as-you-go capital and spent it out over a five-year plan.
And fair to say, those days are sort of over because we've now brought that timing closer together, so we know what our revenues, actual versus projected, are going to be.
That's correct. 60% of your revenues come from real estate, so any surplus that occurs will have to come from really about 20% of the revenues from sales tax.
So bottom line is we're not going to have a windfall to put towards operating capital or Pago, or Pago such as redoing sidewalks that may need it, et cetera, if we don't plan for it some way.
I think that's accurate.
Okay. So regionally, do we know how our regional partners handle Pago items that don't sort of lend themselves to debt service issuance, such as, you know, paving, et cetera? And what I'm talking about is not simple type of projects, such as, you know, filling potholes, resurfacing streets, working on sidewalks, some beautification efforts, such as like putting, you know, flowers up, saying, "You're welcome to Falls Church, here we are." How do other localities handle that?
Well, maintenance activities are in the operating budgets for both the city and for other jurisdictions. Other jurisdictions do have dedicated funding for things that they define as capital, which as Ms. Mester described at the beginning of the presentation here, we define as $150,000 or greater and something that's going to have a useful life of five or possibly 10 years if it's debt financed. So that's how we define capital. So we do have maintenance funds in the operating budget, but those things that we define as capital, we do not have in the tax rate.
Do we know what other comparable jurisdictions do?
I think it varies. Our target has been two cents on the tax rate for annual pay-as-you-go restoration, and we don't have that in the budget.
So this kind of gets me now into at least two recommendations, so I'm going to turn to, I believe it was slide 16? No, yes, slide 16. So the Planning Commission, and I know that we've got members of the Planning Commission here, so they can speak to this and clarify it as need be. One of the recommendations was recommend that the city council establish a dedicated and sustainable capital reserve funding source for facility and equipment replacement. Is that right? That was a motion that was passed?
That is correct. It was passed unanimously.
Okay, then I'm turning to the next slide, which is the city manager's recommendation. So it lists the things that were consistent and not consistent, but I don't see anything in the proposed budget that acts upon that motion. Is that right? Can we fix that slide? Because that's clearly, clearly missing.
I can do that.
And I think that's a really important point that the public needs to know about. There's nothing in this budget that actually supports Pago right now. And I'll get to that in a motion that I'm going to put forward hopefully later today. And basically, what we're looking at minus one year in the five-year CIP, there is absolutely no funding for Pago projects.
I would...
Minus one year.
I would just note that there are reserves that are being used for pay-as-you-go, and that's, that's perfect, that's what reserves are for. And so that is in the budget, and there's significant use of reserves for pay-as-you-go expenditures. What I think your question is, there's no ongoing sustained revenue support for Pago in the budget.
That's what I'm getting at, is that it's all coming from, you know, sort of these windfall notions. So the Planning Commission's recommendation, as I understand it, is to create a regular dedicated funding source, and that can be done through a variety of means. It can be done through a reserve fund or can be dedicated right out of the tax rate, for example, that says, you know, one cent, pick your number, half a cent's going to be dedicated towards capital, however that's defined. And then as far as where we're at with this, approximately how much of unmet capital is there that we've sort of looked at, that we're not doing, that's not part of the CIP or part of the operating, that would be fit within capital, operating or capital, capital?
For capital, capital, based on the definition on the CIP, for FY16, it is 760,000. And for the full five-year period, it's 6.1 million, not accounting for the high school, which needs a separate finance.
And that doesn't account for operating capital, which is something less than that?
Correct. So that would not account for the police radios, some of the unmet needs on page 55 of your budget book, paving, sidewalks, and vehicles, school bus, dump trucks.
So I'm going to highlight just a couple things in our staff, whether we have the bandwidth to do these projects if there was funding. Annual paving, which is about a million, and this is between page 56 through 59. Annual paving, which is about a million, sidewalk maintenance, which is 300,000, and parks and wrecks, which is about 106,000. Is that, are those things that we could actually accomplish if we had the money?
Both department directors are nodding yes. They are heavy work. Come on up, Mr. Collins. I'm getting paving is yes. Did I miss the second part? Danny, could you do parks maintenance?
Yes. Council, the paving is relatively easy to spend, so I think we could spend that money within our existing staffing. Concrete maintenance requires more of a program, a little bit more effort to identify and monitor those, so that may need some additional staffing support.
And I take it things like police radios sort of a one-time, so that can be done, which again, I'm not necessarily favoring, but I just wanted to highlight the annual paving, which I know that we've cut back on before when we've had to make tough budget decisions. Sidewalk maintenance, we've heard about, a little bit about tonight, and parks and wrecks is another area that we've historically heard about. Now, I, for my fellow council members, and again, this will get to a point that I'm going to make later on, when we look at the survey, which is on page 14, at least with several of the projects, and again, this is way too small for me to read on the handout, but things like school, I think that's pedestrian improvements, parks, stormwater.
If I put it up on the screen, if that helps you?
Roadways. It's on 14, so it's up on the screen now.
This is 14.
No, I'm sorry, it's slide 14.
Slide 14.
Slide 14. That's what's up on the screen now. There at least seems to be some support for a majority of those projects, at least the ones that are on the left, for some type of tax rate support for that. Is that, that's based on the survey? Am I getting that right?
That is based on the 875 respondents, which is about 7% of the population.
7%? And those are not multiple votes, I take it?
Correct.
Okay.
But it is a input poll, not a statistically valid survey. So it has value from that perspective, I believe. I just wanted to be clear.
Those, I'll reserve questions. I'll turn it over to other council members. I may have some others.
Okay. Other folks have questions or comments? Ms. Conley?
Ms. Mester, my comment is just about the community outreach section in your memo, and I want to thank you for all the community outreach that you did. And I just want to note that there was other community outreach that wasn't included in here, which was working with the schools. That the survey went out through the morning announcements at least three times, and the Athletic Boosters also shared it with their membership. And I think that needs to be listed in your media plan for that outreach, because I think it's really important that the schools in the city have worked together through our communications departments this year to share that kind of information with the community.
Certainly be glad to do that.
Thank you.
Is that it? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't take time to go through the glass half-full part of your presentation, Cindy, but do want to note that there are a tremendous number of good projects in here, good work that's getting ready to be undertaken. I want to commend the Planning Commission for its decision on the City Hall project. The project that is, as it has evolved over the years, I think has improved with input from all parties, and I think has reached the point where we're going to get a building that is really going to be a new, almost significantly new at least, landmark for the city and a real good resource for the community and the courts, public safety, also for public gatherings. I did want to ask a question on your slide about the parking garage, which is a very important and critical addition to the City Hall project. How many spaces are we getting for the 750,000 that we're spending?
That'll be about an additional 45 parking spots.
Okay, so...
The first floor, parking deck is about 1.2. There is a significant cost difference between this one and across the street.
Yeah, that's, you guessed where I'm going. So what, could you go to that and explain why this, there is a significant cost difference between the two?
Part of, starting with the City Hall, is we already own the land, and we have a good grade there. The first floor is a little more intense because it's secured for the parking, for the police and the sheriff, and has some amenities inside for evidence, animal control, bikes and stuff. So its first floor is very expensive relatively to the second floor. Just adding that second level did not add that much cost to this project, and intentionally it was left to be at this height, so we didn't tower over City Hall and the farmhouse, so it was not built to be structurally support another floor. For the library one, we will be partnering with 313 Park Avenue, so we have to work on an agreement with them. It's in the official design, so we're planning all sides to have a significant amount of brick to blend in with the two brick buildings and the library's restricted covenants for its look to be like the Williamsburg Falls Church. And we have designed it with, preliminarily have designed it with the intent to, in the future, be able to add additional deck. So with that, we had to put some extra funding in to consider some ramping and some connectivity. The City Hall one is also much more flushed out in terms of its costs. We're farther in the design, and we've done civil work and some soil testing. At this point, for the library one, it is the very preliminary numbers provided by the library consultants as part of the add-on, and so we have done no detailed work with our public works, engineering staff, and consultants for soil testing and detail work to do. So there's a fair amount of contingency built into the public parking on Park Avenue.
Thank you. So what I take from that is that the process that we went through, to some degree, with the City Hall to refine and improve and hone the numbers is a process that you're just sort of, you're not, you're not beginning it because the consultant's been working at it for, you know, two years, but we are still sort of early in the process of really knowing how much a parking deck there would cost if we made it look like we think we want it to look. And that decision process is not going to occur in the, a decision about that's not going to be made in the coming fiscal year, but it's going to be discussed during the coming fiscal year? Is that the way you've plotted it out?
The library parking structure, the City Hall one would be FY16 and we proceed.
Right.
The library one is, the public parking next to the library, is planned for FY17 for A&E. So during this next fiscal year, we will be doing the planning, the setbacks, sort of the land use, how does it fit into the great street for Park Avenue approach, and start refining the numbers, and then go into full A&E as part of the FY17 CIP and allocated budget funding.
Okay. So just speaking finally generally, in the area where that parking deck would go, and I include in that, you know, the Rushmark Development, Harris Teeter, I mean, there's going to be some big things happening there over the course of the next year. A new building's going to open up with, you know, 500, 600 parking spaces underneath. We're going to have an opportunity to see how that part of town sort of functions with that new building as we are deciding what to do about parking for not only the library but also the shopping center, which is now a predatory towing minefield.
Yeah, we would be wanting to partner and talk to the Broaddale, certainly the medical and the office buildings across the street, which one of your speakers earlier owns one of those buildings. So how does that impact, how does it... So how does that impact, how does the campus, and I noted on the slide, but I didn't speak to it, we are conducting, we're in the middle of a TDM study for this whole campus area, where we've surveyed visitors, employees, we've done parking counts, so we can look at how do these two parking structures work on non-peak days, peak days, and are there any alternative commuting, teleworking, and other things that we as a government can do to help the parking?
Presumably, our relationship with Kaiser and the use of that garage will continue to be a matter that we pay attention to and see how that works and hopefully continue it.
Certainly that, and the development projects you mentioned and other redevelopment opportunities will continue at assess, but we do know we have some constraints here. We certainly have a lot of city vehicles and public safety vehicles. We have constraints at Broaddale, and certainly the library patrons and staff cannot park near their facility.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Those, I'm sorry for the extra time, but those are two obviously very important buildings. Thanks.
If I could follow up, just while you have these slides up here with respect to the parking question, I have to say I'm concerned about the cost for the proposed parking next to the library. Essentially, for 55 spaces, we're going to pay $3.4 million, which, just a ballpark number, seems to me about $75,000 a parking space, which is a whole lot of money. I mean, typically, in an undergrounding of parking spaces in a development, you might pay $40,000 per space. And so I would encourage staff to look at alternatives such as leasing surface spaces, for example. I mean, when I pass that surface lot there regularly, a fair amount of surface spots available, and I would, I'd like to explore the option, if there are other ways that could save us money. It just seems like a whole lot of money for not a whole lot of parking spaces, and there may be other ways to get this parking without such a large expenditure. So anyway, that's my comment as to parking, since you had the slide up.
Thank you. I would like to just add a little information that, of course, one looks at the net, but in order to build that structure, we're totally destroying the 55 spaces below it and putting in new foundation and footer, so it is creating those spots again. The other thing is, this is, until we know we have approval for the concept and some funding to proceed, we haven't moved down the path of further negotiations with the condo association, the air rights owners, or the adjacent commercials. So, you know, is there some other maintenance or lease or partnership that might help fund this garage? We haven't undertaken that next step yet either. So this is just a straight preliminary cost factor on the city's side of the books.
I would encourage you to take those low-cost options, explore the low-cost options before you go to the high-cost option. Seems to me that that would be the low-hanging fruit. At least my own anecdotal impressions are that the, that portion of the lot tends to be fairly open during most times that I happen by, and it could be a win-win for everyone, just leasing the spaces as they are, the ones immediately adjacent to the library, which are the farthest away to the building. So anyway, I would just encourage you, in the meantime, this is, as you say, one year out, right?
Fiscal year out, so there is some time to do some more work on this, but I would certainly
not rush into a fairly large commitment like this.
Glad to do that. I do know from most of the businesses around us, because we've had conversations with 200 Little Falls, 313, and some of the smaller ones, that there are a lot of days where they may have openings, but we have a lot of impact on them on court days, farmers' market days, special events, so we have some real significant peak overflow into the private businesses, and so exploring options with them, we'd be glad to do.
Thank you very much. Any other? Ms. Connolly?
Which of these projects will require a referendum? You mentioned that with this high school. Does City Hall and the library also require referendums?
The library one is probably, from the policy standpoint, pretty close to that 10%, but the council last year, when they adopted the CIP and the planning commission both years, had recommended that the library have a referendum. The City Hall project is not, projects, because there's four of them, does not require a referendum, and I have reviewed that with three successive city attorneys, including your current one, to confirm.
So if we were to do a library referendum, when would that be? Based upon how the CIP is set up currently?
Probably November 2016, also with the high school and middle school.
We'd have two referendums in 2016.
If it waited one year for the library, it would delay their construction, planning, timing by another eight months, and so it could go to 17, but ideally, I think the library board of trustees would prefer the 16th, so nothing got slowed down.
Questions? Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thanks much. I think there have already been some questions about the parking. When you combine the parking for the proposed library work and the City Hall, we're spending north of $4 million for parking, most of which would be for public purposes, some of it for private commercial development and support, but it seems a bit odd for a city that's trying to go in the other direction, to be spending that amount of money for municipal-related parking. And I wonder, as others have raised more specific questions about that, I would just support the questions raised by the mayor and council member Duncan on that, whether that's really the best way to provide the necessary spaces, and whether there isn't a better way to provide parking within this area that would be more cost-effective. That would be point number one. Point number two, with regard to the library, I tried to get some data about the notion of putting it into a new development. We got that data. We weren't, the data showed that we weren't able to get more space for a cheaper amount, and so you couldn't get more, although it would be a more modern design presumably. So I think that particular option has received no community support. The data is in, and it's been rejected, so I'm fine with that. But I, I do have a residual concern about whether we're really going to end up with a library that's going to serve the needs of people in 20 or 30 years, because when you look at modern library design, it's wide open, it's bright, there are a lot of meeting places, and I just, as we work on this development and refine it in its current location, I will keep pushing on that to make sure that it is a wise expenditure and that we're getting the kind of library that will actually serve the community in 20 or 30 years. Because you look at library designs today, university libraries, public libraries, look very different and have very different functions than have been proposed so far. So I continue to have questions within the current proposal, and hopefully, there'll be an opportunity to work through. Are we accepting any particular floor plan tonight? I mean, when we approve this as a capital budget, is there still an opportunity to work with the library board to look at actually what it's going to look like, what the spaces, how they're going to be used, and to address the question about are we really addressing community needs 20 and 30 years out?
Certainly. Let me take a stab at that, and then I know we have the library director and the board of trustees.
My objective is, I really want a good library, so I'm totally in sync with that. But my question is, what is the opportunity to discuss what we're going to get for this money we're spending?
I think your goal of a good library for 20 to 30 years with good flexible space is totally aligned with what I've heard from the board of trustees. This is a preliminary concept with a good cost estimate, but it is set in the CIP for either the west or the east expansion, because the library board of trustees, staff, and working with our consultants want to refine that. One option gives you some more flexibility using existing space and light, the other does some changes and more reconfiguration. So I would say there's still a fair amount of work to be done with the community staff and council to refine this before anything went to contract for which council would take action.
So what I'm hearing is some.
And once again, it is for FY '18, so we have some time to do some more community engagement.
So what I'm hearing in response to prior council member questions on the parking is that we can look at options that might be more cost-effective than what we're seeing right now, but we're basically moving forward with that process. Likewise, with the library, we're moving forward on a library at this site, roughly that amount of money, but we're still going to continue to work on getting the very best design that we can get. That's what I'm hearing from the discussion so far. Okay.
I have concurrence from the library board of trustees.
I should probably quit, but I'll keep going. A couple more questions. The, the issue then of City Hall, let me focus on that for a minute, because we clearly need to do what we need to do for public safety purposes. Are we doing anything with the front of the building that people are actually going to see? Is that, is that part of it? Because that's the back of the building, right?
Correct.
Okay. So are we, are we making this building something that is going to serve people? I recall the work that we did on the community center, how much more both utilitarian and attractive it was than the prior configuration, so, and by attractive, I mean attractive for the public to use for public purposes. So are we doing something with that?
Yes. Great question. I don't have it in this slideshow. If council wants, I can easily get to that or the video, but in the already approved CIP project for the City Hall Public Safety, which you had approved in FY '12, '13, and '14, there will be a new central front entrance, so it can connect the east wings and west wings to my left. Central front entrance, and more refinement will happen, but you'll have an elevator in the central that would get you to the upper floors, will connect the east wings. We're designing to have the counters of the registrar and the land developments up front when you walk in, then make it easy to get Commissioner Revenue and Treasurer, ADA accessible, and then an easy route up to council chambers. Secure quarterback here, which also then allows us to connect the front to the back. Clerk of the Court reoriented, so if people need to pay tickets or court fines, they can easily do that without all the secuities. And then we would connect in the front, the east and west wings on the third floor, and then have a new elevator in the back that's secure and ADA accessible, abandon the two that are always falling apart, flooding with water, et cetera.
Okay, thanks.
So it's a major good work up front.
Okay, thanks for that. I only saw the one side of it.
Yeah. It's been a while since I've done, the, the video on the website, it's about four minutes, so not too long, but it walks you around the entire project, so that might be a good resource, because you can kind of see how we're visualizing the front. It's still kind of blocky, but it helps message the design.
Okay, thanks for that. Two other questions. During the open house, I had an opportunity to take a look at things and speak with folks, and this issue of police radios came up. I recall the Metro incident. One of the issues there was the failure of the radios. It would be unconscionable for us not to assure the maximum, highest state-of-the-art equipment for our police and fire and emergency medical services. So tell me about that, why it's not in the budget, and how we're going to deal with that. Maybe I, maybe it's not as urgent an issue as it appears to be on its face, but I'd like to know more about it.
Certainly. Well, and we do have Chief Gavin here. The, it's not in the CIP, not from the lack of need, but just from the lack of pay-go money for radios. They cannot be debt financed for 10 years. Now, we could look at a short-term financing, like we were going to lease police vehicles if council wanted to do that. It would have some nominal debt service impact on '16 that's not currently in the budget. It is a need for the police and sheriff. The frequencies are changing, so Motorola is our sole source in order to continue the interoperability with all of the other jurisdictions, so it is important. It could be put off one year, but we can't buy any new, of the old radios, so as they break, and we're going to start having trouble replacing them, and then we're going to have some operational issues. So the chief was being proactive to try to get it into a budget in '16 before it became a critical timing issue. Did I capture that accurately, Chief? Anything to add?
The lifetime of a radio, much like these cell phones that we all have.
Hopefully, it's a longer lifetime than that.
Yeah, that's exactly right. They're about seven years. We're at seven years. Each officer in the EOC dispatch, in the portable, in the mobiles within the vehicles are about seven years out. If they break and do not work, they're not replaceable, there's no parts, Motorola cannot replace the current format that we have. So we're going to have to move into a new format. We will be able to talk with the other jurisdictions with these radios that we have, but they're phased out, and they cannot be replaced with any new parts. They're not going to be supported by Motorola after about two weeks from now, so.
Well, I know one issue I'm going to need to have addressed, certainly the police radio issue. Thanks very much for that, Chief. And then my final question is, it appears that we're sort of expending the water sale money a little bit here, a little bit there, and pretty soon, it's not going to be there. My question is something that I think we need to wrestle with. What's the wisdom? I mean, the uses seem pretty good, but it's going to be gone, and some of it's fairly long-term. I guess some of it's going for the parking garage, and we have some issues that I think have been raised about that. But at this point, we're spending down about half, we put about half of the water proceeds, and we pre-funded the pension, right? And the other half, we said for capital, and we split a little bit off, what, 15% for short-term, right?
Yep.
So we're spending that, and then we're spending a chunk of the remainder, and so we'll have how much left? Five million?
You'll have 6.14 million. So in your packet today, there's a five-year summary, and the last number is 6.1, and there you get a summary there. So there's your 8515 as to how the water sale proceeds are deployed. So clearly, the 1.7 was targeted by council to be the immediate short-term needs, and it's split out in those projects. So yes, that is a good policy discussion and what's brought before council for consideration during this budget process.
Right. I'm really highlighting this because I think we need a bit of a community discussion about this, about the expenditure of a significant portion of what's left of the water sale proceeds, and exactly how we're doing it, and the use of those funds in that way, because we're not going to be left with all that much at the end of it. Now, the question is, if these are all things we would ordinarily do, then it may be fine, but I think that is something, and I hope there'll be some community discussion about. Would we be much better to put that $10 million into, say, a strategically-located parking garage that serves our commercial area, for example, or some other version of that? So hopefully, there can be some community discussion of that. So thanks much. I know I've taken a lot of time this evening, but those are issues that I think are.
And just for clarity, Mayor, if I may, this 6.1 million is not deployed in this five-year CIP, so this is left for future investment of big capital whatever, so, but it is half that would be deployed in this CIP for community discussion.
Thank you.
Other comments? Questions? Mr. Duncan?
Could I just follow up to Mr. Snyder's? So can you give us some information, not now, but on financing the radios? Just an understanding of, do we have to buy them all at once? Can we buy, you know, 20% this year and 20% the next year? And over five years, we've replaced the whole radio fleet, sort of cost is involved, interoperability, et cetera, et cetera. Obviously, something that we want to do. The question is, do we have to do it all right now, and do we have to pay cash for it, or can it be? I mean, if you say they last seven years, it's getting into that category of something that is a capital-like expense almost?
We can explore that. I know that the chief had laid out two plans, all at once or a three-year phasing, so we've looked at sort of the mechanism of what would meet the police needs, and I could work with Mr. LaConde on the financing implications for short-term financing on debt service.
And on the water proceeds question, back in the day, when we had the water system, we were in the habit of using some of the proceeds every year to basically cover some kind of costs, personnel, operating, whatever. So we were not allowed to do that after a time, but the use of these proceeds, as is contemplated here, is sort of a throw- But the use of these proceeds, as is contemplated here, is sort of a throwback to the way that we used to handle the water sale proceeds, when we took, you know, some every year to help do things that we wanted to do. And I guess I bring that up just because if there's some way to make an investment that we go into a renewable asset, like if we buy a parking garage, you know, can we charge for the parking and recapture some of that money back so that we are, you know, not just digging the hole and it's all gone, but that it becomes a renewable resource somehow?
As I have looked at the capital improvement program, and as I have listened to the community talk about things, I'm struck by two things. One is, there's an awful lot of things that we're not spending money on, such as the police radios, that feel very, very critical. And the second thing, which I think it's important to think about here, is that there are things that if you ask the average citizen, they will tell you they don't want to spend money on it, but it's still very important to have. And in the United States right now, there's a huge collapse coming in the near future on our transportation infrastructure. And people don't want to spend money on transportation or transit options, but this is something that's really critical. And Vice Mayor Snyder talked about the fact that we're not going to probably eliminate parking, but it needs to be concentrated in the right location. And that's maybe the question about the parking options that we have for City Hall and in the space next to the library and next to the shopping center there. Are those the right locations? The other thing that I'm really struck by is, people either tend to like things to be bright, shiny, and new, or people want to hold on to what they have that's old. And I know that for me, there's value in both of them, that people, there is a market. There are people that are interested in buying, you know, 100-year-old Victorian farmhouses, and there are people that are interested in buying something that's the newest, most modern architecture. So when I think about some of our capital needs, like the library, we don't have to have a bright, shiny, modern library for it to be a good library of the future. I think that if we design it properly, we can maintain the charm and accomplish the things that need to be done with that. And I don't want people to think that we're not doing that in the library, because I've listened to the library board, and I think they've worked very hard within that space to use it in a modern way while retaining, you know, the value that we have in the historic structure. And I think that while it is very easy to say that other things should just be torn down and, you know, built anew, that we do need to consider, as a city, because of our financing constraints, whether there are other things that we can renovate to get the functionality and still maybe spend a little bit less money than brand-new. And I think specifically, as controversial as it might be about the high school, about, you know, whether we have, you know, fully considered that. Because it's not clear to me that we can afford that out bubble of the $100 million. So, you know, old and new are both, can both add value, and I think we should focus on that. And I think as a city, we can't lose sight of the infrastructure investments that may not be fully funded in this CIP that are critically important.
Thank you. Are there other comments, Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I think many of the concerns that I have have been addressed by other council members, so, and there are quite a few. But let me just break perhaps new ground here, because the budget document, the budget book, 396 pages of it. Happy to say I finally touched every page. Doesn't mean I read every page, but I touched every page. But the pages that leapt out at me in particular are those that, you know, on page 56 through 60, that talk about unfunded needs. So many of these things have been brought up during the course of the last year. For example, the internal auditor for 130, that we talk about, and we just don't seem to get very far with that. The largest group of activities that have yet to be addressed, Fund of Public Works, paving, a million dollars' worth of paving. That seems to be a lot of paving that has to be done. I remember a time when I think the city took enormous pride in having probably the best paving in any municipality. You always knew when you entered the city of Falls Church, because the roads were somewhat smoother. They're free of potholes. They're well taken care of. And that doesn't seem to be the case anymore, certainly. Fleet replacement, salt spreaders, leaf vacuum, it just goes on, almost $2 million's worth of unfunded needs. I just really don't want to be in the middle of FY 16 and have the city manager come to us and say, our trucks don't work. Sorry, they just broken down. It's just kind of like the police radios, that we just can't have that. So I'm wondering what the plan is to address those unmet needs. And before you answer that question, there's also the issue of creating a presence for the city. And I'm disappointed that, as much as we talked about doing improvements to the WOD Trail, a very important and critical part of the city that many people use. Certainly, I've seen city staff walking up and down the trail to maybe shake off some of the fog of working during the day, and it's a good thing. I applaud that. I say hi to them all, so is my dog. But at the end of all this, it's really not about the paving that gets people's attention or, but it's the presence, the kind of presence that I think that we ought to take a look at for that kind of investment, and find a way of making that happen. Certainly, the plans that our planning director have drawn up to show, how there used to be two train stations located on either end of the city along the WOD Trail, and that could now be repurposed, rebuilt as potentially commercially viable places. I think we ought to find a way of getting that done, some innovative ways of getting that done. So maybe the answer is, going back to the first question, of things that are not being funded here. We talk about a public parking structure, and of course, it's an enormous, enormous cost. I just don't know if there's a whole lot of support on city council for that. And yet, we're faced with things that need to be done, absolutely, and they don't seem to be addressed here. I want to know what the balance of decision-making was at, for us to where we are today with the capital improvement plan.
Well, I think you're highlighting is that budgeting is hard. It's a question of priorities. And so part of the public process is, you question those priorities. Do we have the right priorities here? And, you know, throughout the budget, there were compromises made, choices made to fund priorities, means you can't fund other priorities. There is a lot in the budget. I mean, there's a tremendous amount of investment in capital in the budget. And so we shouldn't take our eye off of that fact as well. But even within those decisions, there are things that don't get done. On the police radios, we do need to address it eventually. In the budget, my preference would be, we fund it completely in the coming year. We didn't have the pay-as-you-go capital to do that. And so we'll need to do it next year. We'll need to have a financial plan to do that, unless we make a change to it this year. I think we can get away with that. We do have, essentially what we would do on the police radios is, because we do have a cache of radios. If one goes out of service and we can't get parts for it, then we have to go to the cache. And those are the ones we use for emergencies. And so those would be put into regular use. But for each of those, we can have a detailed discussion about that. You ask about the parking garage next to the library. That is responsive to the planning commission's views. I think they were very strong last year in their review of the library project, that they could not support a library renovation without parking. And so we tried to work that problem, and I think we've come up with a solution that's feasible. We need to deal with our neighboring property owner, so that's a big test for it. But we think it's feasible. But I think the whole purpose of this process is for the council to ask these questions, evaluate these priorities, make changes as necessary, and then we go forward.
Do you have additional comments?
I just wanted to not comment directly on Councilmember Z's point, but, you know, I share a lot of the views, and I think there's a bit of frustration in Mr. Z's comments about the capital program and sort of where we're at. But dare I say, I think that's, part of it is our council's responsibility in visioning and figuring out, you know, tools and how we're going to get there. You know, my view over the last several years have been, even with the economic downturn, we were able to sort of deal with the operating budget the best we could. And we've made it through some very difficult global challenges, certainly not just in the U.S., but globally as far as the economy goes. And we've sort of weathered that, utilizing a lot of different tools, and sort of gotten our hands around the operating budget to some extent. But on the capital, it just seems that there's always this disconnect between capital and operating, and we seem to sort of be limping along on the capital. And whoever can scream the loudest to get in that one year, because that's where the council's focus seems to be, or the community's focus seems to be, sort of wins out. Because there's no long-term oomph on how we're going to fund a five-year, or dare I say, a 10-year, or dare I say, a 10-year plan. So it always becomes a one-year plan, as far as how we're going to fund it, not on the work that the community is doing on it, or what the staff is doing. So I don't want to negate the work that comes into it, but there's a funding piece that's missing every time we have this discussion. And the council set up some policies to deal with that funding, in setting up a capital reserve fund, et cetera. But there also needs to be a will to fund that. And that takes money, tax rate, et cetera, and that plays a part in how we're setting up the operating fund and, or the capital funds. And, you know, it's something that I briefly discussed at the last work session. You know, we're still very early on in the budget process, and I think this operating budget is very constrained, at least on the general government side, which is what we can really dive into as far as line items. I don't see a lot of areas where there can be cutting, be done on the government operating side. I think that's pretty lean. But I don't think we've really figured out a way of tackling the CIP as we move forward. And I'd like to see us take a bold move, or at least have a bold discussion with the community about beginning to dedicate pennies on the tax rate, like some jurisdictions do, towards capital planning. And that doesn't necessarily need to be pay-go. It's just one example. It could be, you know, we debt-financed the radios, even though we would normally do it as pay-go. It doesn't matter. But the bottom line is, you still need money to support however you're structuring the And I think with the budget that's before us, or the advertised tax rate, I'm going to kind of jump to that point, it doesn't really give us much flexibility. And I think I was part of the guidances hit these markers to the city manager, and there's not a lot of flexibility that I see for us to have an engaged conversation with the community at this point. So what I propose is that we consider at least two cents on the advertised tax rate, so we can begin to have those discussions. And that may be ultimately not at all where we land up. Maybe we end up at a rate that's adopted below the city manager. Maybe we can get there. But standing here tonight on what we're going to have to vote on, I'm not prepared to sort of take options off the table artificially. We've done that in years past for a variety of reasons, whether it was storm water that was coming online, and we didn't want to sort of hit things. You know, people had different viewpoints on that. But I do think that we need to have a bolder discussion with the community about it. And ultimately, we may want to be at, you know, an increase of four cents, or we may want to be at zero cent increase. But we also need to know what the trade-offs are and what the prioritization would be under various scenarios. And I think with the tax rate that we have, you know, there's not much room for discussion at all. And I'm not prepared to do that tonight. So I'd like to see a little bit more flexibility built in. And the way that I see us doing that, or at least having that discussion amongst ourselves and with the community, is by essentially adding two cents to give us that flexibility to do that, to be on the capital, and give us the ability to focus and dedicate pennies to capital as we move forward. And I think that's consistent with our policies that we've adopted, but just never, never done.
So maybe this is a good transition to the next item. Before we move on, Mr. Shields, do you have any recommendations of how we deal with these items? In other words, we can have discussion about all of them, then move to a vote, or we can take them one by one? Do either you or Cindy have any recommendations?
For the four items, this is probably a question for the city attorney also, but what we have traditionally done is had a vote, a separate vote for each one, a roll call vote for each one.
No, no, I wouldn't anticipate that. But in other words, we can have that, and then have discussion on the next item, then have a vote, or we can just take the votes at the end on all four items, sort of one by one? Because the discussion seems like it's kind of morphing into, you know, multiple areas, such as the tax rate. Do you have any recommendations?
I would suggest one by one, just so that we can keep track of the comments and make sure they're associated with the appropriate ordinance.
Okay.
And then at the end, possibly just a wrap-up of comments, if there are any things that got missed.
Okay. So we have TO 15-04, which I guess we've already had some discussion about, or actually prior to this meeting, but that would be the first item on the agenda. Go ahead.
Yeah, while I appreciate what Mr. Shields is saying, normally I subscribe to the order of logic, I just, this gets to the point of, you know, how you talk about, how do you fund capital without talking about the tax rate in the same sentence? I just think that that's sort of artificial. So I hope that we can sort of think about these things more fluidly as we move forward, even if, you know, understanding that we're going to have to take different, you know, single votes on each item. But I think it may help the discussion, at least, I would find the discussion more useful if we're sort of talking about the collective budget, CIP, and operating at the same time.
So you prefer to have the discussion on all four items together, and then have the votes at the end, one, two, three, four, boom, real quick at the end?
Rather than artificially separating them out.
Okay. Any other thoughts on this? Why don't we keep things moving, but why don't we have, do we have any comments on that? Is everyone okay with doing that?
No, I think we can both, we can talk and chew gum at the same time. I think we're fully capable of having that conversation. And I agree with Councilmember Bruck that you can't bifurcate, cut out a piece on the capital and not talk about the tax rate at the same time.
Okay. So you want to do the same thing, which is just continue the discussion on all four items at the same time, then have four votes at the end? Okay. So is there any objection to that? Or we go ahead then and continue our discussion? We'll move into the tax rate issue. Before we do, we do have one person who'd like to speak to the CIP, who did pass in a speaker slip, Letty Hardy. Did I pronounce your name correctly? Thank you. Welcome. Come on up. Maybe you could state your name and address for the record.
Great. Letty Hardy, I live at 125 South Spring Street. I mainly came here tonight to get better educated on the budget, but after the discussion on the CIP proposal, I felt kind of compelled to make comments, hence the late comment. We've actually been resident and homeowner in Falls Street City since 2003. So we've been here fairly long, and I think we've seen it change a lot, and in our opinion, for the better. My husband and I settled here right after college, so we were pretty young professionals. We came to the area largely because of the location, stayed for its charm, and planned to eventually have kids. And now we have three, two in the school system and one on the way, hopefully in Jesse Thackeray next year. As we talk about the potential tax rate, I have total sympathy for kind of households with retired people or fixed incomes. My in-laws fall in that population, and they still live in the city. That's another reason why we stay. But as a parent of three kids, I wanted to echo a lot of the earlier comments on supporting teacher salaries specifically, and smart development like Mason Row. There are so many of us that are excited about the potential of Mason Row, and we think about the money that we spend at Arlington, Tyson's, Mosaic, and what could happen in Falls Street City instead. We are so excited about that possibility, but we want to encourage you guys to do it smartly, to think about, you know, traffic on West Street. We'll be really close to it being on South Spring. So we want to think about just traffic on Broad, which I know you guys are talking on Broad, which I know you guys are talking about. Moving on to the budget and CIP part of it specifically, while the public input, I guess, process has been better this time out of the 12, 13 years that we've been here, I want you to continue thinking about kind of getting more public input. There was really only a 7% response rate, or 7% population was, input was provided, which is pretty low, it's lower than our voter turnout. So I want to make sure that you guys, you know, continue to reach out to the public for comment. But I also want you to think about reconciling a lot of input that you did get with what was proposed in the CIP. For example, I don't think the average homeowner would actually be willing to pay $4 million for a net of 90 parking spaces, I think I saw from the presentation, and I think many people would be surprised that it's part of the plan. I would love to see more creative options discussed. For example, this $4 million for those 90 spaces are for two parking garages that are almost across the street from each other. I wonder if we thought about the idea of using just one really big garage if we really need the parking spaces, because I bet that's probably more cost-effective than building two separate buildings. In general, I think, I would love to see the city more widely and explicitly discuss these items being proposed. Often, the only thing that gets talked about are schools and funding for the schools, and hence it draws the most criticism and concern over the tax rate. But I think if we more explicitly lined out kind of exactly where the tax money could be going, specifically some of these items on the CIP, you would get a lot more public input than you do currently. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So why don't we go back to our discussion about the tax rate? Mr. Bruck had made some comments. Are there anyone else who wishes to either make a comment or question about the tax rate? Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are a couple points that I want to address. We've read very carefully all the emails that we get, and a lot of concern about how our rate compares with surrounding much larger jurisdictions usually. And there was some particularly good slides, I thought, that were at the town hall meeting that helped to explain some issues that are frankly beyond the control of the city. First and foremost is the school funding formula. The irony is that Loudoun County is only $3,000 in average less than the city of Falls Church in average family income, and yet they get more than 40% of their funding for their schools from the state, and we get 13%. The second point is that there is a difference in economies of scale. Smaller jurisdictions try as hard as we can are going to be somewhat more expensive than larger jurisdictions. The commercial tax base and the percentage of the commercial tax base is fundamental. So I think it would be really helpful to have more of a dialogue as to what the real underlying funding realities are for the governments in Northern Virginia. And particularly, over the years, these formulas have gotten so extreme in their winners and losers that they really need to be addressed, and that's a point I'm not going to lose. The other point is that there are vast amounts of hidden subsidies that these other jurisdictions receive that have had a huge effect on their ability to hold a tax rate that looks lower than ours. Arlington County gets a huge subsidy from having Crystal City. Fairfax County gets a huge subsidy from having the defense contractors along the Dulles Corridor. We simply don't have those. So, in a way, I think the true cost of running a government in expensive Northern Virginia is much closer than our unsubsidized tax rate than it is the subsidized tax rates in other jurisdictions, which is not a negative about those jurisdictions, but it's tempting to put all of this in the proper context, because the metrics that are used here simply do not take account of some fundamental realities that explain the differences. So that would be point number one. Point number two, there was a question came up that was posed by our citizens, and I would turn it over to the school board. Citizen proposed that we should set a target of $14,500 expenditure per student. I would be interested to know, from the standpoint of the school board, or whatever that number was, I think I heard it right, what would that mean in terms of denigration of the quality of our school system? I'm also absolutely convinced that if we let our school system deteriorate, that it will create a much worse circumstance than we do trying to keep it up and maintain its quality today. So, for those reasons, I think where I am, let's get to the basis, I'm willing to support a 134 tax rate. I think to go higher is to ignore our citizens who have said we're too high. On the other hand, there are some things that I want to adjust within that rate, perhaps bring it down, and perhaps do something like fund the police radios more rapidly than has been proposed. So, I'm willing at this point to go at the 134. I want to get it lower, but it looks like we've been presented a fairly tight circumstance, but I do want to see if we can address some of the capital issues that Councilmember Bruck mentioned. First and foremost, in my mind, is the police radio. I think to go higher than that suggests that we're not paying attention to what our citizens are saying about our tax rate. To go lower at this point than the 134, which I hope we can do, I'm unwilling to say we can absolutely do that and still maintain a responsible government. So, that's what I would recommend at this point.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Duncan?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. All right, well, let me share my thinking on this. It's very encouraging to hear the open-mindedness and flexibility that people have at this juncture. It is still early, I guess, in the process in some sense. We have a lot of work before us, a lot more investigating, I think, of the city's finances and possible opportunities for revenues. We heard about one to nine hundred thousand dollars in new VMLVACO investment money. We haven't even talked about how we're going to treat the pension investments that we made, the relief in the annual required contribution to the pension fund, how that is treated in this year's budget, that, and three or four other things that we just need to work through over the next five or six weeks, and I know we will. At the same time, we are fairly far along in the process, and it is a council manager form of government to some degree, to a very considerable degree. What the manager's given us is what we are working with, at least that's how I see it. There's certainly changes that can be made, but, you know, the manager responded, I think, commendably to council's request for a level tax rate budget that he's presented to us. On the school board's side, they were not able to do that, and that's understandable. You know, they have a different lens through which they look at the world, but now, both the city and the schools' budgets are in front of us, the body that has both representation and taxation responsibilities. So, where this is all leading me is to say that the 134.5 rate that is before us tonight, which I will vote for, is to me just a beginning point of our discussion. The tax sensitivities that I perceive out in the community are more considerable than I have seen them in the years that I've lived here. I think there are a variety of reasons for that. There are people at the senior end of the spectrum who are on fixed incomes, even moderate fixed incomes, who are feeling anxious. There are young families that may be high income but are not high wealth, because most of the money that comes in goes right out the door for mortgage payments and car payments and kid care expenses. We have all seen a pretty rapid increase in the tax rate as a result of trying to pull ourselves out of the economic collapse of the 2008, 2009 era. I think we're still, to some degree, reeling from that. We had the stormwater fee last year over in Maryland, they're, you know, moving to repeal the stormwater fee that we, well, at least to adjust it, that we imposed. I think we did the right thing, but there's no getting around, it adds two and a half cents to the average property owner's tax rate. There's just a continuing wobbliness in the economy that I think many of us perceive. And then, you know, there's some imponderables out there, but we can feel them, we can almost get our hands on them. We know that Rushmark and Lincoln, those two buildings, are going to open up next year, and they're going to bring in new revenues. And at least, on my end of it, I would like to see us take that into account before we start making, you know, what I consider to be a pretty dramatic adjustment in the tax rate, to go up from 130 and a half to 134 and a half. There's a lot of uncertainty about the high school expense. I mean, if I'm sitting here next year, whoever's sitting here next year is looking at a $100 million bill for a high school, then the world looks different than if the council sits here next year and they're looking at a lower bill for that high school. And I have no idea what the bill will going to be, but to me, that underscores why this is not a particularly good year to be increasing the tax rate, because we just don't know what the next year will bring in terms of that expense. Finally, I think in the end, it's the long-term kind of competitiveness with Arlington that is the monster that we're all wrestling with. The schools want to pay their teachers, you know, competitively with Arlington. I think on our side, we want a tax rate that is competitive with Arlington, so that we can continue to attract businesses and, you know, people who will buy those million-dollar houses and come here and pay the extra, you know, three or $4,000 in taxes. We need that, and if we allow that separation from Arlington to become greater, I just, I do have some concerns about the community's long-term viability if we go in that direction. So, for all those reasons, at this juncture, I'm willing to support, for discussion purposes, a 134 and a half rate, but I certainly, myself, and I know others, are interested and willing in really continuing to dig into the budget on both sides, to have dialogue with the school board. I went before the school board on February 24th just as an individual citizen and expressed my belief that, you know, we need to keep pace with enrollment growth, and we need to keep pace with inflation, and there's no budget out there that does not give the schools a substantial increase in what they're getting today. You know, it's perhaps not more than 5%, but in an environment where the enrollment growth in the schools is 1%, I think there's some opportunity for further discussions. So that's where I'm going to land tonight, and I look forward to a lot of good, hard work over the next five or six weeks to get us where I hope we will be on April 27th, which is at a level tax rate.
Other comments? Mr. Bruck?
I'll just, since I have proposed it, and, you know, I do want to hear my colleagues out on this, but I also think it's important to kind of take stock of where we were last year and how we're ending up here this year. You know, last go-around, and, you know, oftentimes on this council in the past, and I hate labels, but quote-unquote, "I was not the tax-and-spend person." By various segments of the community, I was sort of viewed as a visibly conservative member of the council historically, not in the big P sense, but in the, you know, how I approached budgeting. And last year, when the council was faced with what I thought was a very difficult budget as well, some members of council chose to, in my view, artificially keep the tax rate down for, you know, some very good reasons, such as that the new stormwater fee, which is essentially a tax, was coming online, and that it didn't make sense last year to do it. I didn't necessarily agree with that approach, but that's the approach that the council took, so that's how we went forward. But that essentially was over a million dollars into the tax rate, removing that from fund balance, which would have gone towards capital under our scenario and our policies, which essentially is four cents on the tax rate. So we kicked the can down the road to this year. Well, guess what? All of a sudden, we're facing a four-cent tax rate as proposed by the city manager. Is that coincidence? No. It's basic municipal finance. So, we don't do anything this year, don't put the rate where it needs to be, and don't prioritize, we just kick it down another year. Is that in the community's best interest? Does it really get to where we need to be, both on the operating and budget side? I don't think so. So I understand that there's a lot of pressure on people on fixed incomes, people who have not seen salary increases. I understand that, and we need to have that discussion, but unless we talk about how much it actually takes to run the city of Falls Church with our limitations, with our scale, which does have direct impacts on how we go about generating revenue, I think we're just going to be in this perpetual, "let's kick the can down the road" and never be on a path of sustainability, because we're not willing to engage in that discussion. And by me proposing adding an additional two cents over and above what the city manager is proposing is not where I would end up, but I don't know how else to have that discussion with the community and lay out the priorities so we can begin to see what is accomplishable and what's not. Otherwise, we're just passing it to the next year. So, that's where I'm coming at this. And if my fellow council members don't support that, then I ask them to put something on the table, rather than simply turning to the city manager and saying, "Come up with a solution." I think we need to do that. We've done that through policies. If there's certain areas that council members want to cut to deal with capital needs, they need to put their cards on the table. And right now, I don't know where those are at, and simply telling the city manager to do it without at least coming up with ways of doing that may not be doable, and it may be at the end, but I'm not prepared to say I'm going to take the tax rate off the table in order to accomplish things that are critical, like paving, like sidewalk maintenance, like police radios, voter machines, and the list goes on, that are critical to what we do as a government that's at the local level. So I will be making that motion, and if it fails, it fails, but at least I've tried.
Okay, Mr. Zee?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think it's a perfect segue. I am one of those households that live on a fixed income, having retired several years ago. So, I think very carefully before I voice support for Councilmember Bruck's push to add additional flexibility to basically what ends up being a discussion for the city. We know that the proposed force and increase to tax rate is 100% to cover the schools, 100% to cover the schools. The city manager was charged with living within his means to give us a zero-based budget, and he did that. I know he worked very hard to do that, had conversations with the staff, and so I just understand the depth of frustration that many of them have, that they're not able to do more. On the other hand, you know, without the schools here, our properties would be obviously worth 20% less than they are just across the border from Fairfax to Arlington. I don't think this is keeping up with Arlington. I think what we need to do, and I've heard this from so many people already, so early in the process, is that we need to take the discussion of what our teachers are worth. We need to take that discussion off the table. And so I realize fully that if we vote for the four cents, that we endorse the policy of ensuring that the school superintendent will never be faced going forward with a question of whether I should be here in the city and be compensated at a level that I think is fair to me if I were an educator, or do I say, for the lack of several thousand dollars, I move somewhere else? It doesn't necessarily have to be Arlington. I can't imagine how frustrating it must be for the school superintendent to be faced with having great teachers say, "I'm not coming here," days before the school opens. And for a small municipality, you just can't take that kind of a hit. And to be on a temporary math teacher now for the third temporary math teacher in the school year already, I think that's just unconscionable. It makes all of this look incompetent. So I would like to take the conversation of what the teachers... So I would like to take the conversation of what the teachers are worth, like to take that off the table. And I fully understand what that means, is that we can hope that these developments come online, will produce mega millions to fund our needs and our desires, but fully understand that if we have to increase the tax rate as planned currently by your school board, four cents this year, probably four cents the year after that, and maybe four or five cents the year after that, that's the program that we subscribe to. If we don't want that, then we need to be strong, and we need to say, "We're not going to do that." So, speaking as someone who's lived in this city for over a quarter century, has never had a kid in the school system, I do want to have a conversation about what the city believes is appropriate for itself, whether we fund much-needed city facilities or we just know that. Now's the time to buy those things because bond rate is going to go up soon. If we don't do it now, next year it's going to be too late. It's going to be too expensive. That's why I want to have that conversation. That's why I support Councilmember Baruch's assertion that we ought to add two cents to tax rate.
Okay. Why don't we try to wrap this conversation up and hear from folks we haven't heard from? We do have other items on the agenda in a closed session later tonight, so why don't we go ahead? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this matter at this time? If not, I'll just briefly say that I think this is the start of the process. There's plenty more discussion, information, input to be had. I will vote in favor of the recommended advertised tax rate, but that should not be interpreted as support for this tax increase. So, with that, why don't we move on to the next portion of this item, unless someone else has got anything else to say? Why don't we talk about the sewer rates briefly and then take our votes?
The staff report has background on the proposed increase of the sewer rates. As the council is well aware, we have agreements with Arlington County and with Alexandria for the treatment of our sanitary sewer flows, and those plants are undergoing major changes to deal with EPA mandates, and we take on additional debt service for those changes per contracts with those. And so the 3.5% is largely to pay for that increase in debt service. The next tranche will come on in FY '16, but it's also to be able to maintain our sewer line rehabilitation program and to do that according to plan. And so those are the two major initiatives in the sewer, in the sewer utility. Mike Collins is here, if you have any questions on it, but that's a broad overview.
Any questions from anyone? Okay.
I just hope, sorry, I'd ask the cost per household, that's on line 27, is that right?
That's correct.
Household quarter, the sewer bill increased by $4 from $112 per quarter to $116 per quarter, so that's a $20-year increase, right?
That's right. There's four billings, so that would be your median or your average residential customer.
Okay. Thank you. Was TR 1508 part of this bunch of items that were sort of grouped together, was that not?
No, that's a separate item.
Separate item, okay. So, why don't we go ahead, then move to a vote and motions on the items?
Yeah, I'll put forward a motion, but, you know, I did, Mr. Z and I have served now on two different councils together, and dare I say, we rarely agreed. So I think, especially on budget issues, even though we served on various budget committees together, and here you are coming together, at least on this. What I will say is, I neglected to talk about sort of the schools and the salary projections that the school is trying to do and catch up, and I think that's exceedingly important. And part of my thinking about, you know, giving ourselves the flexibility of two additional cents is simply to take the school operating budget off the table. I really don't want to have another year where, you know, we're endlessly debating that because in the budget, given how it was structured and the directions that the manager got was essentially stay within your means, very tight budget for the general government going forward, not much room to maneuver at all. The schools with a program to catch up on teacher salaries, which I appreciate, understand. However this vote turns out, I hope that the majority of the council, whatever that is, gives direction about where we're at with the schools so we can move on to other items, if that's where we want to go, or if there's a will to find the revenue that we're going to need if we're going to do capital, and that's dealing with the operating on the school side sooner than later in the process. And for me, it's taking that off the table at this point. So, with that, as it relates to TO 15, TO 15-06, I move to first reading for...
Before you make the motion, why don't we go through these just in order, and then we'll get there, and when we do, you can make the motion, but just for organization's sake...
Mr. Mayor. 10:30?
Yeah, okay. Do we have a motion to go?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we continue the meeting beyond 10:30.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the others have. Thank you for reminding us. Why don't we go see if there's a motion regarding TO 15-04? Is there a motion?
Oh, I'm just reading here. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to grant first reading for TO 15-04. Schedule public hearings on April 13th and April 27th, 2015, and advertise the same according to law.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Z on the second. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote, please?
Yes. Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay. Our next item is TO 15-05. Do we have a motion in that matter?
Mr. Mayor, I move to grant first reading for TO 15-05. Schedule public hearings April 13th and April 27th, 2015. Schedule second reading and adoption on April 27th, 2015, and advertise the same according to law.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote?
Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay. Our next item is TO 15-06. Mr. Baruch, do you want to start?
Yes. So I move to first reading for a tax rate of $1.36.5 with two cents, which amounts to roughly $740,000 to be dedicated for capital needs.
Okay. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Mr. Z on the second. Madam Clerk, will you call a roll call vote?
Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
No.
Mr. Duncan?
No.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
No.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
No.
And the motion fails four to three?
Three to four.
Three to four, I'm sorry. Three to four.
Okay. Do we have a second motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to grant first reading to TO 15-06. Schedule public hearings on April 13th and April 27th. Schedule second reading and adoption on April 27th, 2015, and advertise the same according to law.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Z on the second. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote?
Mr. Baruch?
No.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver? Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
And the motion carries five to two.
Is it five to two or four to three?
Four to two.
What's that?
Do you want me to recall the vote?
As long as you've got it clear. Is that what it was, five to two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Shall we check? Okay. Okay.
Five to two, okay. Great. Thank you. I'm sorry for the confusion. Let's go on to TO 15-07.
Mr. Mayor, I move to grant first reading to TO 15-07. Schedule public hearings on April 13th and April 27th, 2015, and advertise the same according to law.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Z on the second. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote?
Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you call the next item, please? Ms. Messner or Mr. Shields?
I'll just note briefly, council may recall earlier in the year, the council granted budget authority to increase the appropriation to CATCH in the amount of $25,000. That CATCH was supposed to come back to council then with the uses of those funds in the current fiscal year. They've done that. They've allocated $22,000 to Creative Cauldron and $3,000 to the Little City CATCH Foundation. And so those are the two items that they recommend. It did go through their process. Rachel Crichton managed that process, and we have representatives of our arts community here as well. But that's a brief summary of the item that's before the council.
Thank you. Do we have someone speaking?
Oh, no. I'm just here to support.
Okay. Okay. Are there any questions or comments from council? Ms. Conley?
I serve on CATCH in a dual capacity, as the representative of the school arts community and also as a city council member. And I just want to clarify, you're putting $22,500 for Creative Cauldron, and the other goes to Little City CATCH Foundation? And is that to be assigned in future opportunities? Or is it for specific projects?
This is FY '15 funding $22,000 even for Creative Cauldron as the owner of art space Falls Church.
Yes.
At least, and then $3,000 even just for FY '15. The $25,000 is not continued in the proposed budget thus before council.
So in 2016, you'd revert back to where this has been funded traditionally?
Twenty thousand.
At $20,000 per year?
So the remaining $3,000 would then stay and be available to use in 2016?
No. This $25,000 total goes away in FY '16. The base program funding of $20,000 is in the Rexon Park budget. That's before you.
So the $3,000 is going to Little City CATCH Foundation will remain with the Little City?
It will go away also.
She's asking, once it's appropriated, they will get the money?
Yes. They'll get the money. They'll get to hold that money and determine the use of it.
That's right.
Thank you.
It's operating budget. I think it would take council action to carry it because it's a reimbursement grant. We can work out the nuances, but this is on the operating budget.
Okay.
It has to be expended in the fiscal year.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you all. Are we prepared? Anyone in the public wishes to address this matter? Seeing none of the matters close, the public, do we wish to entertain a motion?
I move to adopt TR 1508.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote?
Mr. Baruch? Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
And the motion carries seven to zero.
Okay. You call the next item, please.
There's just one item on the consent calendar, and that's authorization for the city manager to contract up to $175,000 in FY '15 and up to $105,000 in 2016 for temporary staffing, using our temporary staffing firm of Ronstadt, and that's writing a Richmond contract and subject to annual appropriation of funds by the city council. These are funds in the budget for personnel expenses, and when we have a vacancy, sometimes it's more advantageous to get a temp to fill that before the position is filled on a permanent basis. One of the positions, however, that is in the treasurer's office is a temporary position, and that position is not funded in FY '16. And so that position has really been there to help with water proceeds collections, and that work is winding down. The treasurer has, I think, raised in her unfunded priorities for next year, a desire to have some funding to continue this position, but that can be a separate discussion. This is simply for temporary services for the current year.
So, I'm sorry, can I ask?
Of course.
Just, you may need to say that again, just so I'm sure I understand it. I've talked to the treasurer about it, but this money is going to be spent in this current year, between now and the end of June, to finish up the tasks that are assigned, many of which have to do with IT and some of which have to do with collection of water-related expenses.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, we typically use a temporary firm, but we have generally not ever gone above $100,000 in the past.
Right.
This year, because of those two reasons, we've gone above $100,000, so we want to bring it to city council.
Okay. And, okay, so, and then we're done with that at the end of June. Then the question arises, one of these temporaries is doing some kind of an awesome job, at least, because as it says on line 32, you know, we're bringing in $700,000, and we can collect another $300,000 going forward. So when we have a budget discussion about whether we fund this position in the treasurer's office, is that a permanent position, or would that be a continuation of the temporary staffing situation?
That would be to convert this temporary staffing situation to a permanent position. I think that's what the treasurer's request is, but we'd need to discuss that.
Okay. And so we would obviously be given more information on the costs associated with that and the likely recapture rate of that position if we funded it. Okay. Thanks.
Are there any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to con... Is this a consent item?
It is a consent item.
I still need to read it, though.
I'm not sure you do. I think you can just move the consent agenda.
I move the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Why don't we do a roll call vote? I imagine we can do this by voice vote, but let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
And the motion carries seven to zero.
Okay. Is there any business not on the agenda? Are there any council member comments?
Mr. Mayor, just very quickly, I'd like to express my appreciation for Supervisor Penny Gross, who made a really excellent presentation in a League of Women Voters discussion on the Route 7 transportation section, and also thank the executive director of the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission and the head of our own CACT. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank Mr. Snyder for his role in that program. The mayor and I enjoyed it. It was very informative and very well attended. I had a question about the March 30th transportation-related issues meeting on Mason Row, and is it still going forward even though we do not know exactly what is going to be brought to us on April 13th?
Well, that's a meeting with the neighborhood, and so the developer's taking the lead in that, and we've encouraged them to engage with their neighbors, so I don't thi... I believe that meeting is going to happen. I would expect it to.
Okay. So it is kind of a developer... The notice looked like it was something that staff, our staff, was taking a pretty significant role in, and I... Is that, that's not the case?
I think the developers set that meeting.
Somebody's getting, people are getting up.
It's a developer meeting, but in order for the CACT to participate and be informed, and here at First Person, we did notice it, so it was publicly noticed, so it does look like we're pretty involved.
Did we notice it for council as well?
And Mike can add to it.
Yeah.
Do we notice it for council?
We have not yet, I don't believe. Or did we?
There is something on that notice, but we can do it additionally.
Can we do that, just in case we have multiple council members showing up?
Yeah.
And what's the date of that and time again?
Monday, March 30. It's the fifth Monday, the previously sacred fifth Monday, but at least it's not...
What time and where?
Don't know, forget.
I'll need to get word to council.
It's at the community center. I believe it may be at 6:30, but we should clarify that.
Can we just get a note out to council?
Okay, are there any other council member comments? If not, let's go on to the approval. Okay, sorry, Ms. Conley.
I just want to take this minute to congratulate some winners of the Chamber of Commerce Awards this past weekend. The chamber had their annual gala and recognized four Falls Church business people and citizens for their contributions to the community. And I think it's really important to say that Christopher Fay from Homestretch won the James Elkin Humanitarian Award, Lisa Dambroso-Irns from Eagle Bank was awarded the Chamber Appreciation Award, Sheila Newman, who owns New Edition Consulting, was awarded the Carol Shreve Award, and Tori McKinney was awarded the Pillar of the Community Award. And, did I say that right? I flipped. Yes, the humanitarian award, sorry. There are four citizens, and they are wonderful members of our community.
Great. Why don't we go on to the approval in a minute? I would note, before we go to them, just in looking at them, I believe I was absent from the meeting, but then I'm shown calling the meeting orders, so I think it probably is a typo that...
We can fix that.
Yeah.
That's a good piece of work. I noticed that, too.
I had some edits on that as well that I just sent the clerk. Can we defer these?
Sure.
Sure.
Sure. Okay, so why don't we go ahead and do that?
I had a couple other things, too. Should I, I'll just give her the paper copy.
Okay.
Fine.
That'd be fine.
Thank you.
So why don't we go on to our closed session, which we are going to have shortly upon a motion made by council member...
Do we?
We're not going to adjourn. We'll come back and adjourn.
Is it time-sensitive?
What's time-sensitive?
Close. It is. Okay, never mind.
Duncan.
Oh, sorry.
Excuse me? Okay, upon a motion made by council member...
Duncan.
Seconded by council member...
Conley.
Passed by a voice vote of city council. Council went in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7 for the receipt of legal advice regarding the contract issues and 2.2-3711A28 for a discussion of the unsolicited PPA proposal. Councilmember Baruch?
Yes.
Councilmember Conley? Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder?
Yeah.
Councilmember Z? Mayor Tarter? Okay. So we'll be going upstairs to the O-CR, is that right? Okay, great.